Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. It's 9:02 AM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier, Commissioner Klaus, Commissioner Mejia are on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez. Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Jennifer Walker. This meeting is recorded and will be posted to YouTube channel within 24 hours. As we continue to work through our tech issues. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. And then Commissioner Grant is here as well. So we have a full board. So first up is Office of the Shale's Basin Long-Term Shale's Basin Strategy.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for joining us today. Just doing a quick introduction?
Yeah, I'm John Zank, the Director of the Office of Shale's Basin. We're housed, the Office of Shale's Basin is housed within the Department of Ecology. See if I can figure out this technology.
I think you just point, push the down button and it'll go forward.
Alright, business.
Alright.
Good start.
Yeah. So again, thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. What I was hoping to do today was talk a little bit about how we got here. Some of the things that we've been up to. The last seven, eight years, and then what the future looks like for the Shale's Basin. So a little bit about the basin, it's the second largest basin in the state, second only to the Columbia River Basin. There are two tribes within the basin, the Shale's Tribe as well as the Quinault Tribe. It has huge economic impacts for the region. There's timber, agriculture, manufacturing. Of course, I-5 runs right through the heart of it. And we also have some challenges within the basin. One, seven runs have declined sharply. And we've had larger and more frequent flooding within the basin.
Down arrow.
Down.
Just go ahead and advance the slides from.
Okay, so how did it all begin? Well, the 2007 and 2009 floods were really a big catalyst for what was happening in 2007. Some of you may remember that it was massive flood that shut down I-5 for days. And it caused almost a billion dollars in damage just in 2007 alone, and those were $2,007. So prior to 2007, there was a lot of work that was being done, studies within the basin. And in 2008, the governor created the Shale's River Basin Flood Authority, which is made up of local governments throughout the basin, working on flood protection measures. And then in 2012, Governor Gregwire started a Shale's Basin Work Group to study both or work on both the flood side and the fish side. And that evolved into the, 2016, the legislature created, legislature created the Office of Shale's Basin and the Shale's Basin Board. And then after that, in 2017, investments started to roll in. A little bit about the Shale's Basin Board. They're an independent, diverse group representing tribes, local governments, agriculture, environmental interests, and state agencies. There are seven voting members and five ex officio members representing state agencies. One thing that's unique about the board is that they are independent and work in a collaborative approach in which people may be, you know, from the fish side or the flood side, but they've been working collaborative together to try to move the needle forward. As one board member says, for a hundred years, people have fought over fish and flooding. And now by taking a collaborative approach, they're able to actually get things done. And their major charge from the legislature is to develop a Shale's Basin strategy. And what that is essentially is a series of near-term actions to address flooding and fish as well as a long-range planning in terms of what should be done in the future for the basin regarding aquatic life and flood damage reduction.
Can I make a comment? Or yeah, do you mind if I make a comment?
Sure.
A lot of my board members are new to this process and I've been kind of, you know, I was on the Flood Authority and tracking it. Just, it was something that came up early on that, I guess, the board grew out of a governor's work group or something. Where Thurston County had a seat on that, but when the board was formed, Thurston County did not have a seat.
Right.
Lewis and Grace Harbor do. Just, just a point, just I wanted to, my board members to be aware of.
Yeah, no, that's true. Although Thurston County is a big part of the Shale's Basin and we're going to be considering some things that I'll talk about in a little bit about that directly impact Thurston County. So a little bit about the Office of Shale's Basin, as I said, it's housed within the Department of Ecology. Our primary goal is to aggressively pursue flood damage reduction and aquatic species restoration within the basin. We administer funds and we lead a diverse group of partners, conservation districts, local governments, tribes, nonprofits, and state agencies. And most importantly, it couldn't be done without the cooperation and help of basin residents. So some of the things we did together, we worked with landowners to reduce erosion and restore habitat. We helped residents and businesses protect homes from flood damage reduction. And we try to prepare the region and future generations for the impacts of flooding, which will increase in the future. So in less than a decade, we've invested in more than 140 projects, protecting more than 300 acres and protected over 200 homes and businesses on time and on budget. One of the recognitions, I think, for the success of the board and the Office of Shale's Basin is the commitment that the legislature's made. So far, the last two biennium, we've received $70 million and this most recent one, we received 75 million for projects. Most of that is going on the ground. And so now through 2026, the board is weighing longer-term options to protect people and aquatic life for decades to come. And they're seeking to answer some questions like, how much should be invested in the Aquatic Species Restoration Program? Current estimates, if everything was to be implemented, it would cost roughly a billion dollars to restore the habitat of the critical areas within the basin. Another question is, are large-scale structural flood options, you know, something that should be considered in the basin? For example, the flow-through dam for flood control near PL. Proposed series of levees around Centralia and Shaleas, or some combination of both. So the flow-through dam near PL, the concept behind that is that it would stay open 24/7 and only close when it was predicted to be a catastrophic flood. The gates would close, it would hold back water. And then eventually, once it was safe, that water would be let out. Fish would be able to swim back and forth like they normally would. And only when it was closed, there would be a truck and haul facility that would bring the fish up and above the dam. Like any large-scale project like this, there's, you know, inevitable environmental impacts. Currently, it's going through environmental review through the state with the Department of Ecology. A draft is due out in November for that. It's also going through review from the US Army Corps of Engineers and an expected EIS is due in spring of next year. So another option is what we're calling Local Actions, Non-Dam Alternative or LAND. And it's a series of levees and flood walls around Centralia, Shaleas, but also include levees along the Skookumchuck to protect Bucota and Centralia. And like, it's, it's important to emphasize that this is still in the conceptual stage. It's not as advanced as the dam is. But any large-scale project like this would also require environmental review and permitting. So the board is considering, should, should this be done or even portions of it in combination with the dam?
I have a question on that. So my recollection was that, like, I mean, the dam's obviously probably the best to, you know, more effective or at holding back flooding from that one particular scenario. But my recollection is that flooding can actually come from different multiple sources, not just the river that, you know, like where the direction from the PL dam would, so it seems, so I'm wondering, when you're looking at the land and all these levees, like, in a scenario where flooding can hit you from multiple directions, it would seem logical to want to just sort of protect what you need to protect. That way you're protected against any potential source versus investing a whole ton of money in one potential place, and then you're still vulnerable to all the other places. Is that part of the my off-base on that, or is that part of the analysis that you're going through?
Yes. The thing about, and you're right, if, if the weather event happens in the Willpaugh Hills, then that dam is going to be effective in holding back water. If it's coming from more along the lines of Skookumchuck, it's not going to be as helpful. So, and one of the things that the board is also considering is how much, you know, they don't want to take action in the upper basin that's going to create more flooding in the lower basin. So that's another consideration when they're looking at these options. The dam would actually reduce water level in the lower basin. Whereas the series of levees would potentially increase water level slightly and lower in the basin.
I see. Okay, thank you.
So another big question is, is what to do about the Skookumchuck Dam? The dam was built in 1970. It did not include fish passage, and it wasn't designed to provide any kind of flood protection. It has provided flood protection at times when the reservoir was low, but it's, it's functionally not, not capable of really doing any flood control. So it's owned by TransAlta, who is now shutting down their steam-fired electrical generation facility. Their, their last turbine is due to be shut down in the end of this year. And so TransAlta is kind of trying to consider what they should do for the future. And so the board thought this would be a good time to look at the dam and what, you know, what options there might be. They're considering three different options. One is do nothing, leave it as it is. Two is to modify it, improve fish passage, and improve its ability to prevent flood damage. And then the third option is to remove it entirely. The water that's stored behind the dam is owned by TransAlta, the water rights. And so OCB staff has been looking at, okay, what are some other options if the dam was removed or modified in some way? How can we preserve those water rights? And so we're looking at things like off-channel storage to preserve the water rights. But whatever happens to the dam would have to be done in collaboration with TransAlta, who owns it.
So would, would like the state have to pay TransAlta if they remove the dam because it has vested property rights or something like that?
It's, it's considered a private property right, and so what option would be to buy the water rights and buy the water rights? Or store them off, you know, off-channel. So we've, we've investigated both those options. I think the latest value put on the water rights is about $80 million.
Chair.
Yes, sorry, Commissioner Fornier.
What does that, what does that look like as far as like responsibility? You know, I would imagine right now with TransAlta owning it, having built it, all responsibility for management and liability is all in their hands. If, does, does any like change in the, the structure or the situation change the liability? Just, you know, just like when the county touches, you know, a stormwater issue, they become responsible for it. Is, is there, is there an aspect of that where the, you know, ask different parts of the region take on responsibility for this massive thing?
Responsibility could shift. We've looked at options of Lake Taps is, is an example of that up in Pierce County where there's been a community organizations and nonprofits and local governments have come together to manage the Lake Taps dam and the lake itself. And so liability and responsibility, if in a case like that, would shift to the, to the entity that actually managed and owned the dam.
Okay, and like in that situation, like I can see like community benefit at Lake Taps. And, you know, that, that reservoir has, our whole lives been completely blocked off to the public. If there is some transfer of responsibility and liability, would that create an opportunity for us to also make it a community asset so that we get more return on that? On the existence of that pristine, amazing area out there?
Most of that property above the dam is owned by a warehouser. And they have not been necessarily cooperative in terms of access. TransAlta has a small park there that, for employees. But beyond that, it's, it's all warehouser property and it would, you know, any kind of, I think, extra use aside from the reservoir itself would require some cooperation or buyout of warehouser.
Okay, I, I've heard a lot of talk about transfer of water rights, but I haven't heard, you know, and everybody sees the value in that, but I haven't heard any consideration about liability and risk management as far as like being responsible for that thing that was created by TransAlta. So like, I don't know when that takes place, but that should be considered, I think.
Yeah, you know, I think varying entities see things differently. I think the Department of Fish and Wildlife has a view about the Skookumchuck Dam. And the director wrote a letter saying that he thinks that it should be removed in its entirety. The Quinault reservation feels like the dam should be removed, although the Shalea tribe does not agree with that. So there's a lot of different perspectives about what to do and liability and access for recreation and things like that are all things that need to be considered when, you know, looking at some of these options.
Thank you.
So in June of this year, the board got together and they decided on a suite of six long-term strategy options. And for consideration for technical analysis and review moving forward. And here is the suite of options. I'll just say on the right-hand side, the lighter colored boxes, these are actions that the board would would thinks that should be part of any kind of long-term strategy. And those are things like our Aquatic Species Restoration Program, flood proofing and elevations, the local flood authority projects. We have a national award-winning flood warning system. And continued investment in that, flood plan management, certainly erosion management, and then multi-benefit acquisition, which is acquiring properties voluntarily that have both fish and flood benefits. On the left side, you see the three options, the proposed flow-through dam, the non-dam alternative and the Skookumchuck Dam. You'll see that the two options related to, that include the flow-through dam also include a portion of the land or the local action non-dam alternative, the levees. And the option A is the levees on the Skookumchuck River. So as we talked about, the dam does not protect those communities, Bucota and Centralia along the Skookumchuck. So it would be the dam in addition to those levees there to protect those communities that wouldn't see benefit from the dam. The second option has more levees included along the airport and China Seltzer Creek, which is in Centralia Shaleas area. You see one that doesn't have any of those proposed options, and it's kind of a light touch. No major structural changes, but investments in some of the other programs. And you see some that, that support the, the land alternative. And then with Skookumchuck Dam, you have, you know, modify, remove, and do nothing as, as options there as well.
I have another question, that's a Skookumchuck Dam.
Okay.
So I, and I know you're saying that the, the dam isn't used for like, you know, flood mitigation or holding back stream flow. But I, I've been told that the, the dam is very important for like maintaining constant stream flow, that without the dam, there would be periods of time where the river was essentially dry, leaving no fish habitat. And then there's a lot of agricultural draws from the river. Removing the dam, would that, would that harm any of the downstream kind of agricultural uses? Would they lose water rights? Would they, would that change their, you know, their operations at all?
Yeah, well, you're, you're right. There are benefits to the dam. For example, the water is cooler being stored in a reservoir. So the water temperature is impacted in a beneficial way, but from the dam. The, what, there are water rights below, lower in the, in the river for agricultural use. And they would likely be impacted, and that would be, have to be considered as well. Dam removal is said to, would benefit Spring Chinook, Coho, and Steelhead. Whereas modification of the dam would benefit Coho and Steelhead. And not so much Spring Chinook, which is really the focal species within the basin that's in the most trouble.
Because you couldn't open the dam at that time? Because you couldn't open the dam at that time for Spring Chinook?
The dam doesn't open.
Currently not. There's no passage, but if there was, if, if there, if there was modification, it's possible that they could get up there, but they have less benefit, it's less benefit for them. It's primarily, most of the Spring Chinook spawning habitat is like within the reservoir itself. And so to benefit them, that, that reservoir would have to go away. However, Chinook and Coho could go up. There's another 20-some miles of, of river that they could use for habitat there. So that's, that's what they benefit, the benefit would.
Is that the thrust? So I mean, if, if you could summarize like WDFW's position, is it about the Spring Chinook habitat primarily? Or are there other things that they rely on for their position?
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak for them, but there is a letter and they feel, they feel like the benefits to fish habitat and would be improved dramatically by dam removal. And, you know, there's questions in terms of, they, they want to see improvement.
And that's a difference of opinion from the Shalea tribe?
That's correct.
And what's their position?
The Shalea tribe is, and I don't want to speak for them either, but they are, I think, primarily concerned about sediment. And what that might do, there's also concern, as you mentioned, with flow. Currently with the dam, that, that flow can be regulated in the dry months. And, you know, we wouldn't have that, that, that ability to augment stream flow if, if the dam was removed. So the board, we're going through what we're calling a comparative analysis. We're taking in those six options that I showed you previously. And we're putting them through kind of a rigorous process of, of modeling and evaluation, trying to answer questions like, how many homes would be protected? And what would be the impact to Salmon and Steelhead within the basin? And what are the long-term economic and environmental impacts that something like this would have? And so that's currently going on right now. And the board will take that information and look at these different packages and say, you know, this one does this for flood, this one does this for fish, and try to, to make an informed decision about what they're what they're going to choose for a long-term strategy. And it should be, I should note that these packages aren't set in stone, these, these options. They might choose, pick and choose different pieces of each of those options and then put them together for a brand-new final strategy option.
Do you have public comment requirements for, like, say those downstream water rights holders, some of the, some of the ranches and stuff? Is there a, a public process you do with them where you would seek input in your, you know, your analysis from them?
That's what we're doing right now, is we're trying to inform local governments and the communities that they serve about the Shalea's Basin Long-Term Strategy Process. We don't want any surprises out there in terms of what the board is, is considering. And so this is an effort right now to, to make people aware of, of the options that, that the board is considering. There'll be more time for comment as well, and I'm going to, I'll get into that in a little bit in just a minute. But yeah, we're, we're, we're doing outreach. We've, we've talked to almost every single local government within the basin. And, and just shortly, we're, just kind of shows us our, your time, our timeline. We're in the fall, and so the board is now evaluating these options through technical experts. And their hope is to come up with a final long-term strategy in 2026. And we'll collect input from folks throughout the basin, local governments as well as residents to see what they have to say. So it's, the board is committed to a science-based approach to making decisions about the long-term strategy, but they also want to hear from residents and governments in terms of what impacts they may see and what they think the board should consider when they're making these decisions. And to that end, we're having a couple of open houses, one tomorrow in Centralia at the Veterans Memorial Museum from 5:00 to 7:30, and another one on October 8th in Montesano. And then in addition to that, we have an online open house, which is basically mirrors the same content that will be at these in-person open houses. And if people are interested in looking at that, it's openhouse.officeshaleusbasin.com. Okay, so as I said, one of the things the board wants to know is, you know, what's the best way, way to reach residents in Thurston County? I mean, how can we inform them about what's going on? You know, what, what do you as, as county commissioners think, you know, we should be considering as we move into these next, this next phase? We have lots of ways to stay in touch, which is we're on Facebook, Instagram. We have lots of ways to stay in touch, which is we're on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube. We have a more information on at officeofchehalisbasin.com. We have a newsletter, a monthly newsletter that comes out that folks could stay apprised of the things that we're working on and decisions that we're making. And that's it.
Mr. Fornier, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. Just, you know, since you since you asked like, and I don't, you know, I can't direct staff or anything like that, but we do have a person within the county that is that is intimately knowledgeable about, you know, agricultural uses in the Skookum Chuck Valley. And, you know, I I would encourage you to work with our staff and, you know, through Assistant County Manager Cummings to, you know, kind of find out, you know, where to find that person and how to integrate with with our with with the outreach efforts that we're able to kind of coordinate with.
Absolutely. And I I should note that one of our major partners is the Thurston County Conservation District. They're intimately involved with the Skookum Chuck Valley and the landowners there. We have a number of different projects that are going on, reach-scale, large projects. And we're also working with them on Oregon-spotted frog habitat and research. They've got a lot of great things going on. They're very knowledgeable about the basin and that area.
Yeah, the kind of the other things I I had already mentioned, like an analysis on on like kind of the liability aspect of it, like what would we and the communities that are part of, you know, that that area, what would they be taking on if that that dam is removed and and how do we ensure that they're not left like holding the bag while TransAlta created this 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 thing? And then you know, like I'd be curious about the economic impacts. And I and I know that, you know, TransAlta has through the closure of the steam plant in the coal mine, they've given out millions of dollars locally, mostly in Lewis County until just this last year, they've they've made an investment in meat processing in South Thurston County. But, you know, is there is a similar considerations? In, you know, i- if this thing is no longer their responsibility, the the, you know, the the things that our communities in Thurston County are taking on. How how do we make sure that TransAlta makes them whole and they're not, you know, we're not just considering a narrow view of things and and you know, we're making sure that you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, we're not finding out that, you know, we're now responsible for this thing that is housing or something. I I don't know. How do we? How do we consider that?
Those are very good points, and I think that the board certainly has an eye towards that. There's going to have to be, if anything happens with Skookum Chuck Dam, there's going to have to be conversations with TransAlta. You know, not only to make them whole, but also they have some responsibilities as the dam owner as as well. So liability and the impacts to those folks downstream are definitely a part of of the equation. And and that's a really good point that you brought up that I I will definitely share with the board because I think that they you know, sometimes it's easy to lose sight of the the folks that are downstream that may maybe impacted, you know, with a reduction in water or increase in flooding.
So to kind of close, I would like to, a lot of talk here and questions about the Skookum Chuck Dam, but the the big ticket item that's being evaluated is the flow-through dam. Your P L. And the reason that I asked for you to come and thank you was that we had a presentation from the Flood Authority and it was a good presentation, but it was focused more on like what would be the point of the flow-through dam and what what that's all about. And then we were asked to sign a resolution that potentially of support for that option. While we were chewing on that, I saw this presentation given by Nat at the Chehalis Basin Partnership where I thought this was a little more of a broader like overview and showing that there's six options being being considered, only two of which involve that flow-through dam. So before my board dived into a discussion on that resolution and how we might want to modify it or support it or not, I felt like this presentation was really important to kind of give that more broad-based overview of your process and to show that there are multiple options under consideration. Some of which may not involve that that flow-through dam. Some of my board members are pretty new to this issue, so. Thank you for coming and hopefully that was good information for the commissioners.
Is there a timeline that the folks are looking for?
Not. They they would have liked to have had it for their September meeting, but it's it's really something that they I think what they would like to have is going into the legislative session. My 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 interpretation is that they would like to be able to say, all the communities that are involved here are supporting some piece, like, you know, again, I don't think it really matters what it says because they might, some communities might want to wordsmith it different ways. That's what I was trying to do to to make our comfort where I think Thurston County's been historically, but I was trying to be a good partner and say, you know, so that they could say for this process. Cause it's a good process. You're looking at all kinds of stuff. It is science-based. I've sat in a many Chehalis board base and board meetings. Lots of stakeholders, lots of science and analysis. Lots of focus on habitat projects, just as well as the flooding project. So I mean, we definitely support this process to try to find the right solution. And so, you know, that's kind of where we've sort of land landed in in the past and so I'm I'm happy to to, you know, I I sort of drafted up or kind of wordsmithed out a resolution that was more supportive of the process rather than saying, we definitely are supportive of a flow-through dam, because I don't think we've gotten to that point. Commissioner Fornier?
Now, the the resolution of support was requested specifically for the flow-through dam, not for this whole suite of projects, right?
I mean, that's how it reads to me.
Okay, okay, because, you know, obviously, if there's anything talking about the Skookum Chuck Dam, I'm gonna wanna you know, we're, I'm gonna want to talk a lot more about that one. I don't feel like we've totally dove into that as much as we should before taking any kind of position, but if that's not included in the
No, I don't.
Then I'm I'm game.
I don't think the resolution has anything to do with Skookum Chuck Dam, really.
I I will say that, again, the ecology's environmental impact statement is going to be, the draft is coming out in November. And that's going to give us a lot more information in terms of the environmental environmental impacts of of the dam. And whether or not it can be mitigated or not.
Is that like, I mean, I know like a couple of years ago, there was sort of an EIS of sorts. Is that because you've made changes? They had to kind of redo the analysis?
That's right. There was a pause made and they, that's when the board started considering the local actions, non-dam alternative or land. But at the same time, they, the Flood Control Zone District, the the project sponsor looked at some of the comments and from the the EIS and decided to change the proposal, they moved it upstream to avoid some cultural significant areas for tribes. And they and they redid the design to create more mitigation and avoidance in the construction and the existence of the dam.
Okay, perfect. And that triggered a new environmental impact statement.
That's right.
Which makes sense. Anything else for Jeff? We really appreciate you being here.
This has been very informative.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for having me.
All right. Next up is permit review process annual update.
Interesting hearing it from a representative.
Let me deepen that for me.
Morning, Ashley.
Good morning. I know you have a full agenda this morning, so we'll try to keep this brief. This, oh, thank you. I appreciate that. So this is Community Planning Economic Development's annual update to permit review processes. So this is a a package of code updates that we'll be going through today. As soon as I figure out which direction. So as I mentioned, this is our annual annual update. This is a development code docket item. So these are a little bit different than your comprehensive plan docket items. You you as a board can make decisions on development code docket items anytime throughout the year rather than only making one decision in any given year. So the package this year includes general clerical edits, just small mistakes that we have found through the course of the last year, changes to our permit review timelines. As we call it SB fifty-two ninety, the State's Local Project Review Act. We also have updates to the State Environmental Policy Act categorical exemptions, and we'll dig in a little bit more about what those are. And then a conversation about where appeals go, whether they go to the board or Superior Court. So first off, we'll start with the permit review timeline update. As you know, we've been going through a number of process improvements on our permitting side to make sure that we're complying with with all the new state laws. This is ensuring that our our codes reflect all of those changes in timelines. Right now, we're we're implementing it on the permit side, but if you go and look at our code, the timelines differ from what's in the Local Project Review Act. So this would bring all that into sync. As we went through our public review process, we didn't get any comments on this. Planning Commission recommended adoption as is. Next up, we have our SEPA, our State Environmental Policy Act categorical exemptions. And, you know, as as we've been talking about, SEPA is one tool in our toolbox for protecting the environment. It was established in nineteen seventy-one and what we've done up there is list out all the other tools that we have or use through our development code implementation when we're thinking about protecting the environment. This is just the local list of regulations. In addition, oftentimes we have state and federal regulations that would also apply to a project. So the state already allows exemptions from the State Environmental Policy Act if they think they're of a size or type, this is a quote out of state state law, that's unlikely to cause a significant adverse environmental impact. Because of all the housing discussions, the state recently expanded that list to try to try to make permitting for housing go faster and cost less. So we haven't taken a look as a community at our list of exemptions since nineteen ninety-seven. So what we brought to the planning commission into the community was here's the state's current list. What do you think it should look like for Thurston County? How do we right-size it for Thurston County? So what that looks, what that, what that looks like, at least in terms of the planning commission recommendation, was to maintain limited exemptions in rural county. You know, at the same time, the planning commission was looking at this, they were also looking at the comp plan. And so really trying to focus growth in the UGA's rather than rural county. So maintain limited exemptions in the county for our SEPA permits, but expand them, broaden them for the UGA. So what you have up here, the first line is what's allowed under state law for housing and it's broken up by urban growth area and rural and then single-family, multifamily. The second line is what we currently allow. So, for example, the state now allows projects that are up to thirty units in the UGA to be exempted from SEPA, but our code only allows nine-unit projects to be exempted from SEPA. Where the planning commission landed was, let's go ahead and exempt the same same kind of housing projects the state's gonna allow for the UGA. Try to make those permits go faster and cost less. But hold on to limited exemptions outside the UGA. So just increase it from four units to six units. So any project in rural county, if it's over six units, would still require SEPA.
So this goes right to the conversation we're having about encouraging housing growth in the UGA and working to limit it in the rural county. This is the action we were talking about. When comprehensive plan was about vision, this is the action.
So I'm I'm a little confused. So this on the single-family rural and multifamily rural piece. And I'm wondering, right, like, can we have that distinction and that difference and?
So other other counties have more areas, I think, maybe where they could accommodate multifamily out in a rural area. We really don't. You have to put in a pretty hefty community water and septic system to support multifamily. And so the conversation with the planning commission was like, there's really no reason to distinguish between the two. And that most of our developments, because of rules around permit exempt wells, land in that six-unit range.
But again, if you're thinking the state WAC allows twenty to twenty-five units and currently we only allow four, but the planning commission is suggesting six, it's still quite a bit less when the conversation of rural character comes up. Six is quite a bit less than the twenty or twenty-five that the WAC is currently allowing.
And where the planning commission landed really reflects the feedback they heard from the community, the draft that we shared with the community was what the state allowed. The planning commission did that intentionally because they wanted to see what kind of feedback would be collected and the feedback we received was, you know, yes, let's go ahead and broaden it in the UGA and limit it outside. So this would make permits cheaper and faster for housing developments within the UGA.
That incurred just a great.
So that is second part of the package. So then the last one here, the board requested this item in August of twenty twenty-three. And this is about whether quasi-judicial appeals should remain with the board or be delegated to the hearings examiner. So this is whether appeals come before you on hearings examiner decisions or whether they go to Superior Court. And this was really to just generate a community conversation. So today I'll just I'll just share what we heard from the the community as as well as the planning commission on this item. The kinds of decisions this would affect are primarily like our special use permits, our variances, land divisions, design reviews, site plan approvals. If the board did remove themselves from this process, those decisions of the hearings examiner would just go straight to Superior Court. The reason that other jurisdictions may make this decision is it's difficult to limit ex parte discussions. And of course, if you have those, that increases risk. There are also resourcing considerations. So then looking at just a comparison of what these two appeal processes would look at, or sorry, would look like for the community. You know, when when you're thinking about appealing to the board, you do have to appeal those decisions within fourteen days. It's like a twelve-hundred-dollar fee to appeal a decision and that's to cover the costs of staff and, you know, the just the processing of those appeals. But no legal representation is required. If it shifted to Superior Court, there is a, you know, a thirty-day timeline in getting those appeals in. The filing fee is less, but what we heard is that for nonprofit organizations and like a homeowners association, legal representation would be required. So that's a pretty big difference. The planning commission voted to retain the board as the appeal body in quasi-judicial hearings, and that was based on a lot of community feedback. And that community feedback was really along the lines of they feel like the board is more accessible than Superior Court. And so they would like to retain the board in that appeal process.
More accessible financially?
Not financially, it's more expensive if you unless you need legal representation. I think it was just more, it's more familiar. Is is the way I would characterize it. It's more familiar to go to the board.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we should also consider, you know, our broader budget discussions and any shifts of responsibility off of us onto Superior Court, we need to take into consideration kind of the other things that we're asking Superior Court to do.
So that's it for our package. And what I will say is if there's a timeline that we would like to adhere to, it's really because of what's in this code package related to all of the Local Project Review Act timeline up or yeah, timeframe updates. So as you're thinking about going to hearing, we'd like, we'd like a hearing in November just to move those things forward and make sure our code aligns. You can pull things out of that package, like we've, these are all like discrete pieces. We could pull one out and you can only move some of it into a hearing, or you can move it all to a hearing and see what you, see what you get in terms of community feedback and then only make a decision on pieces of it after this. So you do have options there.
I would, oh, sorry. Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, I land use appeal piece is something that from what I was told, the plant and and your your summary, you said, why would you?
from what I was told, the plant, and, and your, your summary, you said, why would you do it? Well, ex parte communications could create risk and the cost could be for the county and like, those are not the reasons, like, that doesn't even touch on, I think, a whole set of reasons why you'd want to do this. And again, I know there's arguments on both sides of it, but I don't feel like the planning commission actually heard. I didn't know that was even going. Like, if I had known, I would have touched base with staff to make sure certain arguments were presented just for their consideration. Or I might have made, gone and made public comment myself, if that's required, just because until you've sat in the chair and actually had to do the work as a commissioner in some of the most complicated, like, legal matters that, that, you know, that lawyers even see. I mean, this is like, you know, and I did legal work in criminal context, in civil litigation, in family law, and the land use stuff is more complicated, just is. It even challenges my, you know, background and ability, and certainly with the limited amount of time I have to put into the, to the cases. It definitely challenges my ability to do a good job. Because the time that would be needed to understand some of the legal precepts are, is really substantial. So and so what you get is an uninformed political decision, not a legally based decision that creates consistency and predictability for property owners and and it, it upsets a lot. And then, and then there's a ripple effect to that. So I just would like that argument to be made to someone, to the board, to the planning commission, and if we decide not to do it, because there's other reasons that I could make to, to say, no, I, you know, let's keep it the way it is. But I just don't feel like that was really ever. I'll ask you, did any of those kind of things that I just touched on, was that part of the discussion or presentation to the planning commission?
We didn't just like present the, the board's perspective on it, but I will say the planning commission had a fairly broad discussion. And they still thought it was important. Like, they acknowledged that it was hard and that they still thought the board should be a part of it.
It's not the hard factor. It's, it's not that it's, it's not the hard piece of, you know, for, for me, my concern, it's the fact that it is non-legal people are reviewing a legal matter, right? And at the end of the day, some of the majority are, are making political decisions on, on a legal matter, and it, it just, you know, people's relief is, it's always that way. I, when I've seen it, it, it has gone the complete other way and and so, yeah, I have, I have just concerns on how that process really works out. The last one, the amount of time that it took, you know, and I, you know, worked in superior court, I handled these cases, like, I would do prep work for these kind of appeals and just the amount of, of, of time it took to fully go into all of legal, the legal premises of it was a lot, right? And and so it's not the hard piece of it for me. I, I would rather it go into, uh, I would like to have that discussion too.
I think it's the swing, like, this is what really bugs me about it, is like, you get this swing, right? Like, so a hearing examiner does it on legal. Then you go to the commissioners and you get it, because politically that didn't feel really right, like, so then you get the opposite, opposite position. But the lawyer knows that, so they're gonna go right back to superior court, and, and everybody's dragged through step after step of a process. When you put a non-legal layer into a, which should be a legal process, you create waste of time, waste of expense, waste of everything to have these. Because, like I say, the sophisticated parties, they know exactly, if, if the commissioners went outside the bounds of, you know, where the judge shit is likely to go, they're gonna tell their client, I would, like, screw the commissioners, like, let's go to court and get a grounded legal opinion, because commissioners just did what made their constituents happier, made, made them look good in the public, or whatever the considerations are that sometimes prevail. That's all, that I think is bad process for everyone, even if the commissioners are doing their best and, you know, and diving in and all that. Commissioner Forni, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think maybe, you know, like, I see the, the political aspect of it as a check and, it's kind of a check and balance. Right? Like, there, that, that's the op, you know, like, that's the opportunity for the community representatives to speak on behalf of the community and, and what that community characters could or should be like, and it is to balance out the legal opinion. And I, I, I'm thinking that maybe the, the, like, you know, like Commissioner Mensah and Commissioners Mejia, that your, 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 your time that you did work in, in courts is probably, you know, leaning you towards the, maybe more deference towards the, the legal, you know, official, you know, professional side of things. And, you know, like, me, I've never, I've never been in that environment. So like, I think that that outside, you know, like, non-legal influence is, is, kind of counterbalances out the, the, the rote, you know, legal aspect of it. And, and to me, it's, it's a check and balance, kind of, you know, so, I don't know, maybe that's something to consider.
I feel like that's when you start bleeding into risk and liability issues, though, right?
That's our job, though. You know, we're not, everybody knows we're not, we're not like, we're, we're laypeople. And we, we're not, we should, I don't think we should be looking at it through the lens of trying to be, you know, attorneys. But, but you guys are like, you guys have already, you, you've got that training and you, and, and you look at it through that lens. So, I don't know, maybe it's, it's just a nuanced perspective.
Well, Scott will come in and tell you, like, you are supposed to be sitting there seeing it as, like, you are a trial quasi-judicial and I, you know, that's exactly the concern I have, because that's frustrating to me. I don't think that's how it's supposed to be. I think that is how it, how it works, and I don't think that's good process, but so anyway, that's, we don't have to decide this today.
You don't have to decide on whether you're going to include it or not, or I'm sorry. Whether you're going to move forward with recommending it, but I, it would be good to have direction on what you would want in the public hearing draft. Because we will, we will prepare a public hearing draft. A, a menu would be the, the items here. So of the four things listed up there, would you like all of them included in the public hearing draft to collect community feedback?
I would. I think they're all, it all seems good, and I'd like another, like, another sort of hearing myself, what people think about the land use appeal issue. So I'd say include it all.
I'm in favor of that.
Anyone else?
Same.
Okay.
Me too.
Long as there's nothing about the school come check down.
And then we are hoping to schedule that public hearing for November eighteenth. If that sounds okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and get that AI ass submitted.
Yep. It just is a heads up to the board, this is development.
Right after the comprehensive.
So, right, exactly. So comprehensive plan can only go once a year. Development code docket is not on that same. We want to make sure that they're close together.
So if we need more time and.
Exactly.
Thumbs into January, no biggie.
Well, it sounds like a lot of good work.
Thank you. And thanks, we have Hannah over here. She, uh, she's the one who followed her for all that great.
Commissioner Grant, did you have anything you wanted to throw in? Okay. All right, moving along, road fund impact. Here we go.
Morning, Karen.
Sit next to him, Summer.
And good morning, Summer.
Good morning.
They get seated, just a special thing, know that to get this together, there's a lot of hard work in the background that's going on there, find numbers, in addition to all the budget stuff you're doing. Thank you on behalf of, you know, our office. We thank your staff.
And we did it like two ships crossing, right? Something coming on and off of vacation. So thank you for the opportunity to present, Karen Reese, Public Works, Public Works Director, Summer Miller, Budget and Finance Manager in the Commissioner's Office. Hey, and to be able to give it up on the status of the road fund. Not doing it correctly. He probably are, it's just. Would I, that direction? Use the down arrow. Summer's gonna take the first couple slides.
Don't move the screen over to the left side possibly, Randy. Thank you. Perfect. Okay, so this is a property tax collection breakdown in twenty twenty-five of your general fund. You can see that the total property tax listed here is at fifty-four million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand at a rate of eighty-two cents per thousand of assessed valuation. The breakdown of that total is four point seven million dollars is shifted from the road levy into the general fund. There's a veterans earmark of just over seven hundred thousand dollars. Mental health earmark of just under one point six million dollars. There is diverted county road property tax of one point five million. And our property tax without road levy shift, the diverted county roads and earmarks would be forty-five million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars if we stripped all of the road items out and those two earmarks. The property tax with the earmarks that are received into general fund, well, the property taxes received and it's distributed to the veterans fund and to public health and social services, mental health, would be forty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand. And do you want to note that your fifty-four million total at the top is a little inflated, if you will, because I've added in the diverted county road property tax, but our actual certified amount for this year was fifty-three million dollars. Thank you. It doesn't work. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. Okay, and this is just a visual graphic of the property tax breakdown in twenty twenty-five, and you'll see again, it has the diverted county road property tax, mental health earmarks, veterans earmarked, road levy shift, and then what our property tax total is there listed on the side. Oh, it works now.
You have the magic finger.
Okay. So Summer provided the context of the road levy shift in terms of the general fund. This slide, which you have, I'm sure, seen before, but this provides a history of the road levy shift and diversion. And just for purposes of clarity, I want to make, I want to just review what the road levy shift is versus, versus the diverted amount. So diversion, the one point five million, that is used specifically for roads, traffic law enforcement purposes in unincorporated Thurston County. So that does have a specific purpose that it's need to use, be used for. Whereas a levy shift can be used for any government purpose when it comes over into the road or into the general fund. So you can see in the past, this is from twenty eighteen on, we were at three million and four million, and then in twenty twenty, we went to four point five million. I'll make a note, and this ties back to a presentation I gave last week on parks and trails, that five hundred thousand dollars was part of the plan to fund the parks and trails program in twenty twenty. And then there was board discussion at that time recognizing the input, impact of the road levy shift to the road fund to try and decrease it by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we were on that plan through twenty twenty-three with the budget scenarios that you were facing in twenty-four and twenty-five. You can see then that plan shifted and was actually increased. So we were then at four point seven million levy shift with the one point five diversion. So total is six point two, which is a sixty-five percent increase to us in that time period. Okay, and this is a graphic that shows the amount of the levy shift plus the road diversion as a percentage of the total of road levy available. So currently, we are shifting and diverting twenty-four percent of our available road levy. In twenty twenty-three, that amount was fifteen percent. We are not unique in that many counties do divert and shift funding. However, we are in the top four of the thirty-nine counties in terms of amount.
And also, one of, we, we might be the only, maybe there's another county that is taking advantage of all three options for shifting, diverting, and contracting for services.
Specific expenses that are paid on the road fund.
What is contracting for services?
We, we have, we have an agreement with the sheriff's office to pay for a specific deputy, law enforcement officer, for specific law enforcement actions on our roads. Those things include commercial vehicle permit enforcement, work on, work zone enforcement, targeted enforcement of speed. So you don't see that in here. It's about, off the top of my head, like one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we support the sheriff's office as well. So three components.
What was the number you put on that? Twenty percent or something?
Twenty-four percent of the available road fund is levy shifted and diverted. And that percentage did not include the calculation of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but somewhere between twenty-four and twenty-five when you add them all together. Okay. This is a graph that shows the primary sources of revenue. Property tax does account, the road levy property tax does account for seventy to seventy-five percent of our total revenues. These are actuals, and then obviously projections from twenty twenty-five and beyond. There is a one percent increase factored into this. I am going to just, for purposes of transparency, say I have excluded development review from our financial picture here, because development review is its own cost center, meaning the revenues that come in for that need to be used specifically for development review expenses. So I've just removed that from, from our presentation here. Absolutely. So our twenty-six and twenty-seven, it may be a little bit difficult to see on this, but our twenty-six and twenty-seven revenue projections, when we adjust out for REIT two funding, which is used for overlay, and I'll talk about that on the, and, and a little bit, is, is less than our twenty twenty-two actuals. In terms of other revenue sources in addition to the property tax, our motive, motor vehicle fuel tax, and we've had a three percent increase in that over five years, twenty-two to twenty-six. However, I mean, I think that I'm stating the obvious when I say those fuel taxes are not increasing and in fact decreasing. So for example, our twenty twenty-five budget compared to the twenty twenty-six budget from M-Vet receipts is a point four increase. And that point four increase also encompasses Senate Bill fifty-eight oh one, which raised fuel taxes by six cents. We don't get the full six cents. We get a two point five percent distribution of that to counties, but that increase is embedded in that amount, and it's still only a point four percent increase for us. So that tells us the trend for those fuel taxes is decreasing over time. County arterial preservation program is another relatively important piece of our funding pie. And that is distributed by CAP, but we are seeing a decrease in that money as well. It is also fuel tax funded. Our miscellaneous revenues is a much smaller portion of those. Those are things like timber distributions, insurance recoveries, jurisdictional work we do for others, sales of anti-icing materials, things like that. Oh, there we go. Gosh, it's embarrassing that my thumb is not very talented. Okay, here are, is a graph of our road fund expenses. Again, this excludes development review. So we are looking at a twenty-five percent increase over a five-year span. Just for context of what makes up the difference, this is by operational area that I've got it graphed, but indirect costs for public works, road fund specifically is, accounts for thirty percent of our budget or eleven million dollars. And we have of that, about half of that is for equipment costs. So obviously, equipment costs are really critical to performing work in public works. And I will just say those continue to escalate. I think we've all, I'm hopeful, well, maybe not everybody, but if you've gone out and purchased a car in the last few years, you recognize how much our vehicles and equipment costs have increased. And so we are facing the same thing when we go to replace equipment and vehicles. Examples of other types of cost increases that we've experienced since twenty twenty are paint costs. So all of the striping that we do on our roads has had a fifty-one percent cost increase. We purchase over fifteen thousand gallons of that a year. Pipe that we use has had a forty-eight percent cost. We've had a twenty-three percent cost in asphalt since twenty twenty, and here was a pretty significant number that I learned this morning, our chip seal cost when we contract that out. In two, in twenty seventeen, for a two million dollar program, we were able to chip seal fifty miles, very important part of our payment preservation program. Very important part of our payment preservation program. In twenty twenty four, that same two million dollars will fund twenty nine miles. So a seventy one percent cost increase.
Say that again? Powerful numbers.
Chip seal. In twenty twenty seven, two million dollars was able to fund fifty miles of chip seal. Twenty seventeen, thank you. I'll say it again and now we'll get it wrong. Twenty seventeen, two million dollars, fifty miles, chip sealed. In twenty twenty four, two million dollars would purchase twenty nine miles of chip seal.
It's a great representation of what inflation is doing to county government. It's something so simple as putting asphalt and chip seal down on the ground. And the reason I'm highlighting that is because when we talk about what's taking place in our budget, it's hard sometimes for the public to conceptualize, but you have money, just, just spend it. And, and we're right, we do, but with the increased costs and pressure that inflation has created through no changes to, to the work that staff are doing and the hard work they continue to do, it's just the same amount of dollars by a whole lot less of coverage and service and program. I'm saying that so that
We are not unique. This is across all of our, everybody's funds.
That sounds like a lot more than one percent.
Seventy one, oh, one percent, oh, one percent, yes, in terms of our revenue.
We have the one percent property tax cut, but it sounds like a lot more than one percent of a cost raise.
Absolutely. Another couple just examples. So our overlay program, one of the actions that we took within the last few years is to fund our overlay program because of declining revenues, available resources through uh real estate excise tax too. The board had approved that in a couple of different years. We are budgeting that at approximately two million dollars a year because again, REIT two funds are limited. We're seeing declines in those revenues as well. That is um a reduction in our overlay program. We were averaging or had a three million and four million dollar overlay program. So again, just an indicator of we're needing to do less because we have less funding resources. The other, the other action that is embedded in our twenty four through twenty, current twenty seven projected budgets is we have eliminated, or I will say decreased, our operating transfer, our road fund money that goes into our capital program. We were transferring one point two million dollars a year. We use that money as seed money to leverage for grants for capital programs. We have been unable to transfer that one point two million in twenty four and twenty five. We will not be able to do that in twenty six and twenty seven. That will have an impact on our long-term transportation planning. You, we, we are fantastic. I'm not embarrassed to brag about public works being fantastic about going out and getting grant revenue, but you have to have funding to leverage that revenue. We are using transportation impact fees to the extent that we can. However, not all projects can use capacity-related revenue. And so that fact that we're not able to do, uh put some of our road fund money towards that transportation program will, will impact how we approach our transportation planning in the future.
Well, and, and also adding that when we get to the point where we're doing capital projects like that, we know that chip seal, doing those maintenance activities, it's less costly. So the more that we defer maintenance, exponentially higher costs to rebuild, so.
Pushing it out, pushing it out.
Yeah, roads are a funny thing. That if you, it is expensive to maintain them, but it is way, way more expensive to have to replace them. And the deferred maintenance on a road, I learned a lot about this in one of the largest geographic counties in the United States where we had a lot of roads, that they, they, they start to compound on themselves. What, from a, a crack or a chip or a divot turns, can turn quickly after a rainstorm into a pothole, which then can erode other aspects. And then now you're looking at major section upgrades or renovations of a road. And so um my, um my previous contacts, former public health director, said, think about it as a living organism. And it's a lot easier to uh be on a diet and take supplements and exercise than it is to have, to have an organ replacement, uh because that's what can happen. The roads will kind of some major issues that then you have to go deep down into the subsurface to then fix. And it's very costly and
Exponentially more. And let's also keep in mind, we talk all the time about being a growing, a growing population and community. So we continue to add infrastructure and our budget isn't reflecting the, the needs that we have as that infrastructure grows and we need to maintain it.
And more wear and tear.
And more, and more wear and tear. Yes, exactly. The other, other just information that I wanted to provide on this is that our personnel cost as a percentage of our total expenses, expenses is about thirty five percent of our total budget. That is probably a little different than you see in some of the other funds because of the nature of the work, the equipment that we require, the materials, et cetera. But as with anything, the materials and equipment don't do you any good if you don't have any people to be able to operate them. I, um, for this next slide, I was also going to pass out a ten-year financial plan just because I think it's a helpful representation of what you're seeing in summary on this slide. How we're recognizing that I have two commissioners in the room and three virtually. So not everybody would have the same ability to, to view that. Maybe I can leave that and you can have that as a resource um in the, in the future as you're thinking about this presentation, but.
Can we pass it out and then scan it over?
Sure.
I would love to see that.
Is this, I mean, does this slide capture?
This does at the, at the high level.
So maybe that'll get us through this discussion.
I think so. I just, yes, I think it's probably a useful tool for you, you know, to walk away from this presentation from, but everything that's on there is in summary form. Maybe just start with, yep, yep. So this is a summary of our road fund revenue expenses and fund balance. So the key point for me, when you've been looking at your general fund and other funds, you want to look at that net line there that is showing. So revenue and expenditures, you can see that in twenty twenty one, our revenue exceeded our expenditures by seven hundred and twenty nine thousand. You can see then in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, that's no longer the case. Our expenditures exceeded our revenue. So how are we funding that? We're funding it with fund balance. Now, we had a very healthy fund balance coming into those years, nineteen million, five hundred and forty two dollars in twenty twenty one. But it's not taking very long when you're looking at a five million dollar deficit or a six million dollar structural deficit to start spending down that fund balance. So if you go all the way out to twenty twenty nine, based on current projections without having made, without having gone back to the budget and, you know, that, that we're looking at, you know, in twenty twenty eight, eleven million dollar deficit and in twenty twenty nine, a six million dollar deficit. Part of the reason that you see these variances from year to year is because every other year we do a chip seal versus an overlay. So that, that account in a chip seal, we will, we would prefer, based on all of the reasons that Jennifer and Leonard outlined, have a higher chip seal program because that's investing in preservation that is going to reduce the high capital cost of an overlay program. But we would, we had targeted a five million dollar program. Um and so you're seeing that variance in those other, every other year. Yes.
But, I mean, and I understand all the, everything you said about deferred and how it's costly. But in terms of like what the expenditures are, I mean, the board's in control of that, right? Like, I mean, you have projects that you'd like to be able to do and they, you know, I mean, it's a unique area in terms of like the, the, there's some departments where we don't really have any discretion. You know, like if, if you're the public vendor, like court assigns you a case, you can't, can't defer that case and go, you know what, we don't quite have staffing. We're going to do that case in twenty twenty seven. That doesn't work. So it's just unique that, and that's why the board has relied, I think, on, on the road fund shift.
I would say the services though, that that same, that same thing applies to other offices and departments as well. You look at the auditor's office in terms of licensing and permitting, it's still just the level of service that you would provide. There's still a, like.
Yeah. Some things are unique and don't have that. Some do. Um you're not the only one. I'm just saying that the, um. I, I guess I'm just saying that when, when you've got this precise number under expenditures, that assumes what? That, that we're going to do the projects in the order and at this, at the timing that you've.
This isn't our capital project fund. So that's a whole different fund.
You're just talking about, well, then we're going to do the chip seal on the schedule and at the mileage rate that you've.
Mowing, vegetation removal, drainage, NPDES, National Pluton Discharge Elimination System, I think, right? Responsibilities, requirements, traffic.
And what I, what I learned, Chair, is that a lot of these dollars are tied to the personnel to do all this work. And um, because I thought about the same way you did in the beginning, that, oh, there's, and I think we had that conversation. If there's a bunch of projects lined up, maybe we could pause them. But maybe um between Jennifer and Karen, you can talk to like the, the composition of, of those dollars. And I was helped, Jennifer helped me to understand that it's largely personnel to do the work. So you want to talk a little bit more about?
Yeah, well, it's, the road fund is specifically for M and O. It's not the capital side of it. So it's, there's planning, there's survey work, there's um the managing of the right-of-way, the, um, the maintenance and operations of the roadway itself, of the vegetation in the right-of-way.
Bridges, bridge inspections, sidewalk maintenance, safety aspects to this.
There's a, there's a, about a hundred and twenty FTEs.
Twenty FTEs.
In the eleven ninety road fund. So very different. When Karen talked about the capital projects and doing that operating transfer, that operating transfer is coming from the road fund, which it was traditionally like one point two million. It's been reduced to three hundred thousand. That's coming from the road fund into the capital thirty ten fund, which is different from this.
And is that fund, that's the fund that you use to build dollars up to do big projects?
Yes, correct.
So.
That we leverage for.
And the three hundred thousand, just for awareness, is to fund studies, preliminary studies to plan our program. That, that, that three hundred thousand dollar transfer that we are continuing into that fund thirty ten is to do that planning program.
I would like to see a breakdown of positions, right? Because that would help me like, a breakdown, like just see what is being funded through, like what, like you're saying it's a hundred and twenty positions, right? And so it's like, okay, I'm, I'm guessing that goes into the administration of it. I would like to see. I just need to get my head around, like what positions.
All of road operations. And I believe that's fifty five, right there, road operations is fifty five staff, almost all of traffic.
And then um I would also like to see, yeah, I mean, you're, you're saying that, but I, I need to see like, what does that include, right? Is it, and I know it's engineers, it's planning, but like, I would like to see more of, of that breakdown. And then um what specific programs? I'm seeing the rural community support program, right? I'm seeing the traffic calming program. Reduced level of service for mowing, vegetation removal, pothole repair.
Are you on the next slide?
Oh, I'm already moved forward. Yeah, sorry. Because I, I, I feel like I just need.
But she's reading off the next.
No, sorry. Don't, you, you don't have to move forward. Cause I mean, I just, um, I just started kind of internally panicking and so I just started moving forward and. But I, I, I would like to see that and I appreciate, you know, and I think once the board has the, the ten-year financial plan, it is helpful. I, I'm just, I'll admit, I'm kind of struggling and.
What's your struggle?
It's not an understanding that we're in a deep hole. Um it's more of. I'm trying to put my thoughts into words and, and there's a lot. So Commissioner Masri, I know you had questions, so go ahead.
I mean, I, you know, this, these are hard conversations and I really appreciate public works coming. I appreciate everything you guys do. We're just sitting here like with, you know, if the jail's going to close and Thurston County is going to become a magnet for crime across Western Washington, that's what the sheriff said is going to happen next, last week versus, you know, chip seal on a hundred and eighty third. I, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure where the public would want the commissioners to put our resources. So we just have to, I just wanted to go through this. I mean, I've gone through it a couple of times, Commissioner Mejia has. New commissioners haven't really even seen how this works like functionally and what even the options are. Why did the board transfer what it transferred? I remember Commissioner Edwards wanted to double it, uh just two years ago. You know, I, I didn't support that at the time, but I mean, we just have a set of tools and we have, we have a set of consequences to what we do. And so I just, I just wanted to make, as I want to be able to look my directors and elected officials in the eye and say, we, the commissioners aren't, we, we overturned every rock. We thought of every possibility in order to balance the right set of priorities. I felt like this conversation had to be had. And, you know, it, you know, maybe we just looked at this and go, okay, we've done enough, we move on. But it's irresponsible not to sort of look at every tool. When you have a set of commissioners that have come and gone and haven't gone through anything like, none of us have gone through anything quite like this.
What I would say and what this shows and the ten-year plan shows is public works will be making cuts in the road fund. At the existing level of road shift and uh road levy shift and diversion, we will in twenty twenty six project a negative fund balance of two point two million. And in twenty twenty seven, seven point four million.
So what's, to walk us through, what, what would be the cuts in twenty twenty six that you would project based on the current levels?
In twenty twenty six, we will work toward, we will have to reduce uh likely a million, we'd need, we'll be digging in.
I was going to say, like, she'll give a high level, but she, she still has to have some time to, to go through that too, but.
So I guess to that, I will now move to the next slide. So short-term budget containment tactics, twenty four that we've already implemented some and then through twenty twenty seven, we would and will continue to reduce our chip seal and overlay pavement preservations, which we discussed the implications of that. We've suspended the one point two million dollar operating transfer to capital programs. We would have to continue that. We will revise our capital program focus to focus more on, to have stormwater projects, water and sewer utility projects. We're delaying equipment replacement. We have held positions opened as they become vacant. We will need to unfund positions. So we estimate that in twenty twenty six, we would need to unfund eight to ten positions.
That's a, that's a swag because you're.
I'm swagging it, yes, but yes, a, a, a million dollars, a million dollars.
Second, it's a, it's a guess.
Okay.
It's an estimated guess based on, but, but they have not. See, part of what we're doing is waiting for this conversation. They're flagging, and, and we've been talking about it, that twenty six, twenty seven, the road fund's in trouble. And so we're, we're here, we're looking at what that means. And we don't have a, the assistant county manager, Walker's perspective, which I agree with. We're not saying these are the positions that are going. It's, they're just kind of ballpark.
We need a flavor of it so we can make, kind of balance out.
By different priorities. Because when we said the, the road fund's in trouble, and I think my understanding was, was, oh, well, then we can just not do some projects. And what, and we will definitely get you a breakout of all the positions that make that up. But what we're hearing is it's not just projects, or actually there's people and program, and the programs that the people work on. So that's where those high-level numbers come from on slide eight.
And I also want to just take a moment to say, you know, our cash flow needs are a couple of months' working capital, about six million dollars. But what also is really important in the road fund is that we have a reserve for emergency situations. So in twenty twenty two, for example, when we had the flood, we expended about two million dollars in an emergency response. Now, we ultimately received one point five million in FEMA funding. I will tell you that we got the last installment of that like two months ago in twenty twenty five. I also won't talk about the blood, sweat and tears that were invested actually getting that in the door. But we all know there's some uncertainty about what that looks like. Now, in the past, that hadn't been a, a concern because we had a healthy fund balance. Because we had a healthy fund balance, but going forward, we don't have that situation, and so we would want to build in. A reserve to be able to manage and respond in an emergency situation, I mean, that's just good for the county to, to be able to respond. I see words forming, Commissioner Mejia.
Um, yeah, I. So I, I hear what Commissioner Mansour is saying, right, in terms of like, right, like those impacts, but. Man, whenever there is not a pothole that is covered, like, we're definitely hearing from, you know, roads are very important to. Our community members and, um. And so I. This is one where I, I would really like to dig in a little bit deeper, um, with some of these short term containment, budget containment tactics, but. Um. Because it, it seems. I know that the state is also going through the same situation with their road fund, and I know that there's been a couple of. You know, alternates that have been discussed, and I would like to know, right, how do we not get into this really deep situation? Um, and, you know, discussing alternates, but I feel like the time is so short, like if you're saying like, in twenty twenty seven, that's when we're hitting the. Like, these decisions have to be made sooner.
And twenty seven, we'll be making those decisions. Uh, and just to finish the presentation piece of, you know, those were the short term things, and long term, apparently nothing's gonna happen.
Let me grab Commissioner Poirier while you, while you're doing.
There we go, oh, sorry.
Hope you have something on this, Commissioner Poirier.
Yeah, it was just a couple of minutes ago, Karen mentioned the twenty twenty two flood. And FEMA funding and how difficult that was to get back and how much effort that took. The other day, when, when we were getting a, uh, presentation from emergency management, that was kind of alluded to. Like, and I'm just curious, from your perspective, what role does emergency management play in helping you guys. Uh, secure the funding for these types of emergencies, so we get paid back?
Well, I would say they're the subject matter experts, and they, they are the facilitator and coordinator with FEMA. And sort of, and provided guidance and leadership to us on, on the process and the, um, uh. Best approach to providing information to be successful with FEMA, and they were really, um. Provided assistance to us throughout, throughout the process.
Okay, thanks, I, I, I wanted to hear that from you, just to highlight, you know, th- this is a, you know, this is an interconnected web of things. And as we have another conversation probably in the next couple of days about restoring funding for emergency management, if we can. You know, like, that's a very important part of our, 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 you know, our little county ecosystem to make sure that we're. Doing all those things and, and reimbursing, you know, through FEMA and, and have the experts, so thank you.
Yep, absolutely, so then Commissioner Mejia's question, some, as we start to dig in further on the long term budget containment options. We would look at, at, for example, suspending the rural community support program, so that's that program that provides. Um, support for funding resources for our, um, smaller jurisdictions in the county. We would suspend the traffic calming program, um. We would, again, we've talked about unfunding physicians, we're currently estimating that's about seventeen percent of our road fund activities. And then we talked about level of service, and, um, you know, these are the types of things we would be talking about, uh, reducing. Just like we talked about with parks and trails, right? Mowing, vegetation removal, pothole repair, dead animal pickup. We would change the frequency of the striping, which obviously has some, um, safety considerations that we need to take into account, so. Uh, this is just, I would say, the, the tip of the iceberg, we would be going back and, and, you know, this is, this is a few that I've listed. Um, it is not comprehensive, but that's the, those are the types of things that will, um, be impacted.
Commissioners can help you with the striping now.
Right with the water can, one hand, and then for the trees, and then. I think it's like Commissioner Klaus, because I understand that.
Yeah, Commissioner Klaus was the best striper.
I'm happy to pick up a second job.
Building skills, and then, uh, Christian Grant, one sec, I have one question, how much does rural community support cost us?
It's, uh, well, we, uh, it's about two hundred seventy five thousand, uh, annually, so a total of five fifty. No, it's just truly what happens is, we get funding through grants, through TRPC, through, for our project. And we get a little bit of extra administration cost built into that grant, but what we need to do then is free up funding out of the road fund. That is not associated with federal requirements, so that they can perform projects. So basically, we'd have to come up with five hundred fifty thousand over two year period to be able to pay them out of the road fund, which is complicated, right? We don't have that anymore, I mean, we wouldn't have that ability and flexibility.
Commissioner Grant.
Oh, uh, I was trying to write down what I was gonna ask, but I guess I'm gonna just say it, say it out loud, um. You know, I, I guess for me, I'm wondering, um, can you flip back a couple of slides to the revenue, like the, the bar charts you had? Uh, wait, wait, or you can go to that one, the next, the one that's, you can go back to the one that, um, was, uh, the table in Excel. Let's look at that one, two forward, yeah, okay, so. I guess for me, I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question for Ty and Carolina, um, more than anyone else, um. You know, the, were you presented with, I mean, this is kind of one of those things for me where I'm trying to wrap my head around. How we weren't preparing for this three or four years ago, um. Be, because we can, like, if you were presented with this last year or the year before that, we would. With these estimates, um, of revenue and, you know, and things like that, that, that we would have been thinking about, you know. Not using the road fund for certain things because it needs to cover all of these other things. Um, you know, and I guess I'm just, it's just confusing to me how we end up with, all of a sudden, we end up with, um. You know, the, the expectation that we're gonna be under, um, you know, we're not gonna have enough, um, to, to cover things. Now then, it makes sense to me that that is the case, because every year we have colas for all of our FTEs, we have to. Every year, we have one set of numbers that's, here's our revenue, and our expenditures go up every year, just from colas, no matter what. Um, and so I guess, I guess I'm wondering, um, you know. Should we really be thinking about, right now, we need to be thinking about what, how we're going to, you know. Make sure that twenty twenty nine and twenty thirty and twenty, and all, we should be thinking about revenue options for, yeah, for next year. But we also should be talking about, you know, what are we gonna do to make sure that in twenty thirty? Um, you know, we don't have double this, this issue, because we'll have, you know, our expenditures will be going up each year, so. I guess the question is, you know, um, di- did we know that this was going to happen last year? I mean, in the year before, were you guys kind of expecting that, that this was what you were presented with? And we were gonna be working towards, you know, having to make some reductions in, in roads?
You go back to slide four. Karen did a great job of explaining the history, when I joined the board, there was a four, four million dollar shift. We, we, the general fund was tight as a drum, like always, we, uh. Director Wa- former Director Walker came in and made an impassioned plea for five hundred thousand dollars to supplement parks. Which we did, that's why you see four to four point five. At that point, at that point, we were like, we cannot keep doing this, and we made a commitment, we tried to say. We're gonna step this down, two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, just squeezing our, our belts to try to get this down to zero over time. And we did that for three straight years, you see four point five went to four point two five, went to four, went to three point seven five. Twenty twenty four, twenty five, we, we just had, again, we had, we had flat, we had revenue problems, we had rising costs, I mean. We were just in a bind and.
And all the other, uh, elected offices came in and they like pleaded, right, we can't take these cuts, please, and. For me, that was one of the priorities, like when I came in, I remember I was like, let's just pull the plug on the road fund. Uh, but it would just decimate our general fund, and so that's why we did the slow. Kind of step down, right, just so it would not really decimate our general fund either. But yeah, in twenty four, twenty five, when we were discussing what. We were really weighing out, do we cut general fund positions? And we're hearing from offices and departments on, you know, I think we, we heard up some of that last week. Um, you know, we were, we were really doing everything we possibly could, and we took that up to the max that, you know, of. What we could lift it up with, the idea that, you know, hoping that revenues were going to come in, um.
State was, was discussing all sorts of, you know, different ways with electric cars and road usage fee, I mean, there was, there was some moving pieces. Commissioner Edwards was advocating for a much higher road fund shift, um, Commissioner Mejia and I went ahead and voted for this increase. Because we just had, had, I mean, we were just stretching, just like we're trying to do this year, stretching every which way to try to meet. Meet the core needs and balance priorities, but yeah, we did see this coming, and Jennifer has been a great advocate, very consistent with her messaging. That we've got a problem over time, which is, which led to the policy that led to that three year. Um, diminution of the road fund shift, but we just haven't been able to get there, if we ever did a levy lid lift. My first thing would be like, get rid of that and get the road fund back to where it needs to be, that would be a top priority for me if we ever got public support for a levy lid lift.
And remember, there was an amendment, the board was reverting, was going to be reverting back.
Two million.
Two million.
So, when we talk about planning, so, so the department is doing their best to, to anticipate and plan. But these are significant, like, even the jump from twenty three to twenty four, that decision was made in December. That decision, that significant increase was made in December of, of twenty three. So, in, in terms of trying to plan for that, and that's why the questions kept coming, are we going to continue with the same? Shift, are we gonna be reducing that because, because of this? And, and frankly, at the time, at least as it was, uh, communicated to Public Works, we were told it is for twenty four and twenty five only. And you should plan for twenty six and beyond to have it restored back to the twenty twenty three level. So that was just, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, that was within the last six months or so that we had recognition that we need to be.
Touch on the budget amendment piece really quick, because I mean, even. What we had, you know, we were having this discussion about the reversion that came back, and I think that was the first thing that, you know, the board was like. Let's revert it, but you know, this two million dollars back, and then of course, that didn't quite map out just because of. How the revenue and figures came out, and, you know, we had to kind of undo our, our budget amendment process. Um, and, no, we're, we're back on that, but there's always been priority of the board to reduce. Any kind of, you know, shift that we're doing, it, it's never an easy decision.
The way that bounced around in twenty twenty four was in the spring, we did the amendment, I remember it was one of the first things that, that happened when I got here. Two million back to the road fund, wonderful, they start programming it out, we go through the s- uh, summer, in late summer. Summer comes on and says, let's take a deep dive and make sure everything's dialed in, the state is signaling that there's some issues on their end. Forecast is extremely poor performing, we have to come back to the board in the fall and say. Amendment changes you made have to be undone, so in twenty twenty four, Public Works Road Fund was yo-yoed from. Here's another two million, now we have to take the two million away, and. To twenty twenty five with our commitment to the board that we're gonna be coming, which we have, every month to talk about where the budget situation is. Not knowing what we're gonna do with the road fund, because again, the direction was twenty four, twenty five bill was, it's only gonna be the transfer. And the department is signaled, are they gonna transfer for twenty six and twenty seven? Because if they do, here are the impacts, and with the conversations we've been having with commissioners. Dialing in and I understand why, because it's such a big issue, and all the information that's been requested about, can we have, can we see more information about? Why we have the deficit we have, here we are now with the road fund, looking at if we continue the trend that the board has set in twenty four, twenty five. You have your Public Works Director communicating to you what the impacts will be, so this is by no means a, all of a sudden. And this is a, a longstanding conversation that, uh, I've benefited from talking with Commissioner Mensor. Who gave me an overview of how things.
Yeah, and I just wanna highlight, like, there's two examples of, of a major decision by the board to try to make this problem better. In twenty twenty, when we agreed to step down, and then when, when the board, when the board, in that amendment, we're. First thing we did was try to restore that two million that we'd shifted, so I mean, we're cognizant of it, and we've tried. But there are so few tools to help the general fund, and, you know, this one, the capacity for this is like. It's crazy, I mean, you know, what, what you're allowed to do, so it, you know, it's just been something that I think commissioners have been forced into. In, in, in a couple of different timeframes, and, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna come home to roost at some point.
I do wanna just say too, that, that two million dollar yo-yo piece of it, one of the things the board did do at that time as well was provide us ARPA funding. In the, to just about one point seven million to help with our pavement preservation program, so they did leverage some other funding as well, but.
Commissioner Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, thank you, thank you for that, that really, you know, I just, I kind of just needed to hear that, um, conceptual pers- perspective. Of what's been going on, this is really well presented, and, and, um, and it really, and I'm just think, I'm really grateful, cause. For this presentation, um, because it really does paint that, more of that whole full picture of, we have nothing left in our coffers. And we are, um, facing, you know, cuts in every area, including roads, um, if, if we do not. Somehow find a way to message that we need a levy lid lift, and so, um, that, and this is great, this is just, I, I just kind of needed to hear it. So I appreciate this presentation, it's been really, really good.
Okay, awesome, is that, is that where we needed to land? For this, I would. Ten forty nine, I suppose we recess until eleven, and then we're gonna pick up the discussions from yesterday regarding the budget, um. Revenues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Alright, so eleven oh three, we are back from a brief recess in this boardwork session for Wednesday, September twenty four, twenty twenty five. Next up is item four on the morning's agenda, which is twenty six, twenty seven biennial budget reduction overview with adjustments. Um. So, uh, this is kind of like following up on all the decisions made yesterday, and I'll turn it to the county manager.
Thank you Chair, um, I just wanna start with a huge thank you to the county commissioners for their hard work yesterday. And all the staff, time and effort took to put all that together. And then, special thanks to Summer, for working on very quick turnaround times. Um, and it is appreciated so that we can continue to move forward and meet the timelines that we need to meet. Um, and give the departments and offices enough time to enter information in. Mr. Before you, we have the biennial budget target reduction scenarios, which you've seen the black, red and green. Today, we have added, uh, a, two, uh, columns with blue text. And I wanted to quickly just explain what we're putting together, just as conceptual, um, scenarios for you. We took the eighteen point five that the board made in decisions and applied it in the first. Um, set of columns that it has a blue shading, applied it across the board to all offices and departments.
Just, just clarified, seventeen point four. Which would reduce the thirty six to eighteen point five.
Yes, thank you for clarifying, seventeen point four, and. What you can see is the impact of the reductions, and then the recalibrated estimated base budget. So the thought there is if the board wanted to say just across the board, taking the seventeen point four and giving it back to all offices and departments, that's what it would look like. And then the next set of columns with blue text, that's, um, a beige or khaki color. What we did is we took ten million of the seventeen point four and applied it to all offices and departments. And, uh, in that process, there's still seven point four, that would be, that would be available to the board to then. Issue back as targeted restorations, now, we have highlighted the sheriff's, uh, law item. Line item, and that's because when we did the original reduction based on the maintenance of effort. The sheriff never received the full, um, twenty six percent reduction. And that's where his reduction amount was capped at five point five. For a twenty-six point four budget. Um, and so I'll let Summer kinda talk about the options there to restore. Because it's not necessarily with, doesn't follow the same formula. And you, we can notice that the number doesn't really change per se. But, yeah, will you speak to that, Summer?
Sure. So, um, you're talking just sheriff, not overall, correct? So the sheriff's number that we started as, um, county managers stated on the thirty-six million dollar cut exercise or twenty-six percent. Was just the difference between the estimated base budget in twenty-twenty-six and the budget in twenty-twenty-five as adopted through amendment two. Um, when we roll forward to the two options, um, at twelve percent to sixteen point seven percent. We are taking that delta, if you will, and we're reducing, um, the reduction by the. Amount of the percentage change based on the decisions that were made yesterday, right? So in the first section on the left and the, the greenish, beige-ish color. Um, we're reducing as five point five million dollars by the twelve percent, just like everyone else. And it's spreading that same percentage of reduction to the reduction.
So I think Summer, in this sheet, the, the actual number isn't impacted, so we have, we'd have to probably, uh, make that adjustment later.
You guys, could you guys maybe share it on the screen so we can all be, or is that, is that possible? I mean.
Do you have it with, in front of you?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you could, uh, share, I mean, share it just so I wasn't toggling between two screens, but yeah.
Um, I think we'll try to get it up for you, Commissioner.
And, and just to, like, I, I just wanted to highlight because I'd asked, I'd asked Summer and Leonard for this number. You know, that third column in each box where it says new percentage of general fund budget, I mean. That is what it is, but that wasn't what was most helpful to me. So I, I wanted to know, like. Because of the maintenance of effort, uh, for the sheriff, I wanted, when we initially asked for a twenty-six percent exercise. I wanted to know what the sheriff's number actually was because. Obviously, it's really significant cuz he's a big part of the budget, but it wasn't actually twenty-six percent. And the number that, that we calculated was eighteen. So in the initial exercise, the. That was what we were, that, that was what we calculated as being the sheriff's, um, ask for the, for the first exercise.
Yeah, if you didn't have the maintenance of effort, a backstop is cut would have jumped up to, I think, just over eight million.
But it was five-five, not eight, because we had the maintenance of effort and the non-supplan, the public safe sales tax and all those considerations that. That, that limited, um, the ability to make the same cut that other departments were looking at.
Yeah. And so Commissioners, if you're looking at this sheet, the sh- the sheriff law line item. We have to make a correction cuz it, it didn't adjust in, in the formula. It's still just twenty-six point four. But as we reduce his, in both scenarios, whether we spread out the full seventeen point four or we only do ten. Uh, his, uh, budget would change and, uh, to the good. The other considerate, uh, thing that this doesn't consider is, we heard what the board, uh, comments were. And we really appreciate the effort that IT and central services made. So these scenarios also include for central services who actually, um, had staff impacts. A two hundred thousand dollar give back to the two million cut that they made. They're just, they weren't on the original list, and so we don't have them.
Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you. Um, my question was regarding the adjustments that are not reflected in the spreadsheet yet. For, um, law. I didn't quite catch why the numbers weren't adjusted. I see that the reduction numbers are adjusted, but the new budget column isn't. Can you just clarify why those numbers weren't updated? Is it because we just received more numbers this morning?
No, um, it's, I'll just be very frank, it's because Summer's from la- yesterday afternoon until this morning is building it. And everything is locked into a formula, Commissioner, except for the law item because it didn't follow the same formula. So we will send out an updated one, but quit, do, quickly. What the number should be in the twelve percent scenario, their budget goes from twenty-six point four to twenty-seven million. And in the sixteen percent scenario, it goes to twenty-five point four million.
Okay. When, uh, when we send out the new ones, can we put dates on the bottom since we've received different versions of this spreadsheet? And I'm sometimes getting them mixed up because I have two copies and one has a date and one doesn't. So if we could put a date on the bottom of each of these when we receive it, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, what we'll probably do is we'll put a date in time since both of them were sent out.
This one has a very tiny date at the bottom, but, uh, a time maybe is, since Summer's been working like crazy. I mean, I, you know, and she's just been generating things like in real time.
That's part of the challenge when we're getting at, I just, I, I say this because. Need to preserve, uh, Summer and the resource. I mean, she is working extremely hard, so. I know that the board, we know the board needs information and we're absolutely committed to that. But the more of variances of information we need to do, it's, I, I'm gonna need the board to focus on what the board needs. In order to make the decisions because the random requests are taking her a lot of time, uh, and effort. And in that, we all know when you go fast, that's when you make a potential mistake. There's a little bit of a, a hesitancy even to put this up and, and have it because this, this becomes a public document. And we know that right now, in this environment, these are concepts that we're looking at to get board direction.
And these are the results of decisions that were literally made like late yesterday.
Not even twenty-four hours.
So I mean, yeah, okay, Commissioner Grant's next.
So, um, yeah, I. Uh, I wanna make sure I'm following. Um, and so what I'm, think I'm hearing you guys say is that, uh, the blue is. Um, hold on. I'm not, I'm not quite there yet. So it's like, okay, so you're saying that i- if we considered all the things that, you know, all of the different things we talked about yesterday. Then we would have the ability to adjust, uh, the overall percentage that we're gonna cut on people's budgets down. Is kind of what I'm, I may, I just wanna make sure I'm getting this right. And so this is an exercise showing on the screen that, that, um, you know, if we got, got it down to twelve percent. Um, this is what their budget would be. If we were at sixteen point seven percent, this is what their budget would be. But that is reflective of you, of you guys taking all the things we talked about yesterday.
Yep. Yeah, so let me see if I can e- explain. The first scenario, so if we took all the things that we just, that we discussed yesterday. And we evenly applied it to everyone, just absolutely even-handedly, the twenty-six percent cut becomes a twelve percent cut. Across the board and you see that blue set of numbers. The proposal that, uh, you know, I, I had the idea, um, of just kinda maybe half, half, do that with half of it. And then selectively apply half of it. And it seems like staff has come up with something quite similar. They say, here's ten million dollars of the seventeen and a half, apply it evenly. And then that's, that reduces the cut from twenty-six to sixteen point seven. And then we would have seven and a half million to debate among ourselves of where to put it to, to try to lessen impacts, you know. Not just even-handed like peanut butter across the board, but like, here's a special need, here's a particular priority. Here's an operation that doesn't, you know, absorb cuts as easily as another, like, to try to right-size it for the, the different variability. So that last box is kind of, like, that's where I'm interested in looking at. Because we were already dropping people's cut to, you know, considerably for everyone, period. And then we would have additional money to apply as a board in a targeted, selective, strategic way.
Okay, and so th- thank you, that does help, help. Um, de- definitely not, I, I don't know, but I participated in one where we do it like this. But it, so it's kind of flipped, so I was having a hard time conceptualizing it. So, um, the, the question I have though is that we haven't actually, so we still haven't actually made. Complete decisions about yesterday, right? I mean, I just wanna make sure we're.
We don't make deep decisions till we approve a budget, like, in a couple of months. But we, we make preliminary decisions so that that, with that guidance, the, the offices can build the budget based on where they believe the board's gonna, you know, land on their targets. So, yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, I think you should think of it as a, as, as decisions. But we do have the latitude to make changes. It's not, it's not a legal, lead binding decision.
Okay. And so, and so Ty, I guess, you know, this is the point where I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna just kinda give some input here on, from my end of things that. This, I'm not sure, did we end up like deciding that we, did, was there a vote that said that we were gonna evenly distribute this among all of the budgets? I can't remember. No.
No, no, so, let, let, let me start from the beginning.
Yeah, Commissioner.
What I said in, in our, the initial comments is. We did just put two conceptual proposals so that you could see how it plays out.
Sure.
We, we are not saying this was board direction, but we have to have a starting point. Now it's an opportunity for the board to discuss amongst themselves what direction they wanna give to staff. Because there's some work we have to do to get this all balanced out.
Sure.
We could take all.
Sure, so that's why I'm asking the commissioners, right, that I, I mean, this is me trying to get myself from conceptual to, um, more of a, a targeted plan. So that's where, where I was going with this. I'm sorry, but I, I, I was just making sure that my assumptions were right, that we, we didn't ever say that we were gonna. I just couldn't remember. I remember we had some votes and sometimes.
Yeah, no, I mean, we could take all the extra revenue that we came up with yesterday and apply it all the way we want to. But I feel like everyone in this organization would take a deep breath, you know, to, to be looking at, you know. Fifteen, sixteen percent, not twenty-six, you know, just, I think that would help us all. And then we would be able to selectively apply some money to where we needed to go.
The other aspect, the other aspect of this is, and we'll, we'll pass on in just a minute, um, yesterday, we had the roll-up of the decisions. And I, again, I would treat these documents as draft documents that are being worked on very quickly. Um, we'll get copies for those commissioners who, um, may not have a copy with them. But many of the departments and some of the offices provided full twenty-six percent cut. It didn't get us to the full thirty-six million because not all the offices submitted, uh, actual cut numbers. So where we need to get to this week is we need to have. Targets, general fund targets that we can give to the offices and departments. And the change from the, the work that you did yesterday to today is you, you freed up seventeen point four million dollars. In different ways to now be used to, to have targeted restorations. For what has been submitted and then to ultimately give targets to departments that really didn't submit any cuts. So that they're, they, they know how they need to move forward.
Just to flesh out this process that County Manager explained to me this morning, we identified some additional rocks yesterday to look under. As I, he thinks that they'll have that information tomorrow and we're potentially proposing a follow-up meeting Friday. Because even if we get through all the things that we wanna decide today, there's still gonna potentially be some more things to consider. Based on things we identified yesterday. And so that's, in terms of everybody's scheduling, you know, Thursday should be open for our, and then, but maybe Friday, we're gonna.
Yeah.
Friday, we may need to be brought together.
Okay, I, I will just give you guys a heads up that we're back at Fred Hutch Friday morning. I'm available Friday afternoon, but just, it's gonna be tough for me on Friday morning. Um.
Good to know, thank you.
And then we have a month off after that, so that's why, you know, October will be less than that. So, all right, so I, I wanna just say a few more things, so. My, my question, okay, so, um, I have this file and thank you, Summer, today for getting me flipping this around to me in Excel really quick. Um, you know, I have a file that I've been working on, um, uh, in the background. That's pretty much all of the stuff that, it's just one big file that has everything in it. And, and I've been, um, you know, plugging in and looking at different scenarios. Um, and, and, um, I guess I just wanna explain that for me, this is, uh, kind of. A different process than I've ever been involved in when it comes to budget cuts. So, so one of the things that I will mention is that, is that we've identified certain, certain buckets of money. So like public safety tax, um, you know, will essentially reduce. And I, and I understand that they kinda have made that adjustment, but you know, when it comes to public safety tax money, where we put that to offset things. Um, will be in certain areas. We had our, our, our elected officials come before us and some of them said. Some of them said to us, we can't take a cut at all. Like, and, uh, and I spent, and I, I will say, I spent a, a, uh, an extraordinary amount of time reviewing the RCW. Uh, you know, this discretionary, um, worksheet that everyone went through, which is really telling me is like, which by, which areas within our budget. Um, are mandatory versus discretionary and many of those elected offices, it's, they're all mandatory. So, um, you know, so it's kind of, uh, there's a part of me that says, well, we really know that we can't cut a million dollars from the assessor's office. Um, uh, because, uh, we can't get the work done, you know. So I guess that's the part where you're saying, Ty, that we, we would take the seven million dollars remaining and plug that back into some of these budgets. Is that's kind of the way you are trying to approach this?
That's what I'm, yes, yeah. We would look at where we think that the impact's gonna be too great for the, you know. And it's just, you know, for whatever reason, there's different reasons and different arguments and different offices, but that's where we would try to patch holes. Not just evenly across the board, but hey, this group is too small, it's, it's, they're too lean, their function's too important, whatever.
Right. But what about, I mean, I guess where, where are we considering in this process, the discretionary versus mandatory? Things, you know, so like, um, you know, they're in the auditor's office or in the, um, you know, I think we, we already.
In that discussion, that, in that same discussion, that's what, that's, that would be part of the consideration of where to plug money back.
Yeah, cuz like, cuz like, one of the things for me was, you know, with, with public defense, we just assumed we're not touching public defense because they have a new mandatory. Requirement, but there are a lot of office, other offices with mandatory requirements that we probably can't cut. Um, and so to me, it's like, I don't think that we'll end up with, um, you know, I think there's gonna be winners and losers, you know. So I, I, you know, that some offices will ver- have very little taken out of them because we have to have those services in order to move forward. And, um, and so I guess for me that, that, I, I mean, I just wanted a chance to be able to say this cuz we haven't, I'm not, I haven't been able to talk to you guys. But, so for me, it's really hard to think of it in a way, or approach it in a way where we start with cutting their budgets by this percentage. And then working our way back instead of looking at what they presented to us and then moving forward. Um, and so I, my file is different in, in the way that, um, it takes all of the different submitted proposals. And then adds it up at the bottom and then it says, okay, they've submitted seventeen, I mean, minus the sheriff's.
So.
You know, anyway, it's just different. So I, I'm a little confused, but, but I guess we'll, we'll try to do it this way.
Let me say that the, the way that you're approaching it is how we've always approached it before.
Right.
And we've always, with a much smaller cut target, and we've always failed to reach it. With this large target, we had to make sure that we reached it. And so I think it sort of necess- I mean, I wasn't the one that thought of it. It's our team, our, our staff team. But it, it made sense to me to approach it like, we have to hit this target, so let's work backwards from it. And when we make decisions, we're still making sure, like, we, we don't have the latitude to, you know, we had a two-month fund balance. We were trying to maintain, we were stretching to try to maintain our, you know, f- fiscally responsible two-month fund balance, but there was latitude there. Uh, we're not, we're, we're not at a point of having that latitude. So we, um, I, I think it makes sense to do it this way. And, and again, to your concern, maybe, you know, if you wanted, you know, maybe you don't think seven and a half million is enough to plug back into the essential needs. And, and you know, and maybe it's, maybe the amount that we spread to everyone should be smaller. I mean, that's certainly a proposal you could make. You could say, let's put five million back toward everyone and, and then have twelve and a half million for the commissioners to, to plug into holes. So to speak. I mean, this is, these are just, these are just proposals of staff that I think are, are well-taken as a starting point for the conversation, but.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, oh, go ahead, uh, Assistant County Manager Walker, and then I'll go to Commissioner Klaus.
I do think it's, I do think that, that it's important to recognize that there are. The mandatory requirements in terms of the services to provide or the functions for the county to, to perform. And then there's a level of service on those mandatory requirements, so.
I think that's right because the thing, the law may say you have to do this thing. The law doesn't say how many people or how fast or how well you have to do that thing. I mean, you know, like.
I think it speaks to what you talked about earlier where you said that, you know, the public. Um, prosecuting attorney's office or the public defense can't, aren't saying when a court date is going to happen and when they're gonna go to trial, right? So that's being dictated to them, but some of these other things, it's a, we are required to provide it. How we do that.
It's not always, it's, it's not black and white, like, this is a mandatory, so therefore full funding. Well, no, I mean, you know, maybe two less employees, you still do the same thing. I mean, that, that's not, it, it's always a little more complicated than sometimes you hear. Commissioner Klaus is next, and then Commissioner Fornier.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, you kind of, when you got to the tail end of what you were just saying before Assistant County Manager Walker was speaking, um. That's kind of where my brain was headed. I was thinking, you know, maybe. Somewhere in the middle of these last two sections that staff have put together for us, um. I don't know that I would, you know, be ready to throw out a number for how much, um, we should spread evenly across. All departments. I'd like to hear what my teammates have to say about that, but I, I do think that there could be a way. Um, where we evenly distribute a lower dollar amount and then we have more to play with. I think that's probably a good idea. Also, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say on that, like, keep in mind that we're, there are a few more things out there that. That may yield, I, I would, I mean, we can't promise or be certain, but. I feel that there's gonna be potentially some decisions that commissioners can make Friday that would maybe. Increase that amount, so I mean, it's just something to factor in.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
I keep going.
Um, and then I was also gonna say, just kind of on the note that Commissioner Grant was raising about the mandatory versus discretionary sheet. Um, we all, you know, received that. It was extremely helpful. I. Think probably all of us went through it, I'm guessing, because it was such an important and helpful document, but. It was like a hundred and sixty-three pages and we haven't. Really had that discussion yet as a board. I know the opportunity to have the discussion about that sheet. Um, is kind of throughout these conversations, but I feel like maybe having an intentional conversation about. What's mandatory and what's discretionary and how we wanna handle those, um, two categories would be beneficial.
Commissioner Fornier.
Um, I, I, I think the Assistant County Manager Walker really summed it up very well and there, there's, you know, there's mandatory and then there's mandatory. And, you know, some of these things, it, it comes down to service level. It's like flavors of mandatory. So, you know, like some of, some of even the mandatory things, there's a level of discretion that we have as a board. To decide what we can afford to make that look like to meet that mandate, and then we. Decide the level of risk we're going to take or we can afford to take. And then, uh. A- as far as just a, hey, we're doing ten percent back or, you know, evenly, there's, you know, not. All of these mandatory things are created equal either, you know, like the, you know, we were just hearing from. Uh, Public Works, you know, and like, I, of course, am gonna, I wanna advocate for restoring funding or emergency management because. You know, like you heard from them, it's, it's, it's important that we have those pieces. Uh, you know, put in there so that we can receive the funding when we're eligible from FEMA and the, you know, like there's, so there's. There are things that are not necessarily equal to other things, so I, I think we need to, like strategically look at. What we refund.
Uh, well, of course, yeah. Okay, um, so.
So first order of business is, how do you wanna s-? I've heard, it sounds like the board would, would like to take the seventeen point four and split it up. Um, it would be great for us to know what that, what, what you want that split to be. Scenario in front of you has ten million across the board and then seven point four set aside. To plug back, and of course, we have the other items that we're researching.
Well, could, you know, i- it might be useful to. Just throwing this out here, thinking out loud, it might be useful to do that back, that exercise backward, meaning. If we assume that we were gonna go ten million across the board and seven and a half million, if we start to. Discuss the tart, how we would target that seven and a half million, we may find that, oh my gosh, that's not nearly enough, or. That's plenty, and then that would help us back into the right split.
It's a great, happy to do that.
Can't think of any other way to, cuz it's really hard for everyone to sit here at the table and go. What that split ought to be, just without having digging into where commissioners are gonna wanna see reapplication of targeted funds. Does that sound? Makes sense to the rest of my teammates?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So maybe Mr. Cummings, you can go get the whiteboard so we can keep track of where commissioners would like to restore.
Yeah, whiteboard, Mike, great. Commissioner Klaus.
Um, yeah, I, I think I was just gonna agree with you, but I forgot what I was gonna say, sorry. I got excited about Josh getting the whiteboard.
Alright, so I, I don't know quite know how to go about it, but I guess maybe just. Maybe just go commissioner by commissioner as to things that we think that. Like devi, what we're, what we're talking about is deviations from just an across the board, you know, everybody. Gets revenue back, like where, where do we think priorities are concerned why?
It's also important to remember is that all your departments met their target.
Yes.
Many of your offices did not, so that's where.
Well, I, I mean, you've put it in that way, but in my, in my mind. They, they met their target, they just didn't tell us, like, the target was the target that we gave them.
If you're looking at it that way, then that's.
They just didn't tell us how they're gonna divide it up, but, you know, and they could, they, they made an argument that they should get less, but I mean, that's the point, that's the point.
Okay, then that, then that's a great starting point.
That, that has to be.
Do this, uh, in a way, can we, instead of just going commissioner by commissioner, can we instead maybe go office by office or down. Methodically through this, this spreadsheet, just to, you know, stop at the assessor and say, okay, uh, you know. And, you know, for me, it's like, I have a whole spreadsheet that. Says, you know, here's what they asked for, here's what their comments were, here's what's mandatory versus discretionary, and it's, it's in this. It's literally this worksheet, but in, in an Excel file, um, and I, so for me, it's. I was hoping to hear from other commissioners, uh, like each one. Of where we thought, think we're going for each one.
Be a more thorough and organized way to head to it, so I, I support that. Commissioner Klaus, I saw her thumb, so let's do it that way. Let's just go down the list. Start with the assessor at the top.
Yeah, let me get to this chick.
We've got the numbers here in front of us.
Well, one of the things, you know, I, one of the things that I will say first about this from on my end is, um, and I'm sorry, I just popped in. I'm just still not on mute, but, um, is that they, I, I, I have a thing that says that currently in the assessor's office, there are four vacant positions. Um, so, and, and that they, um, have vacant position savings of almost like five hundred thousand dollars if they weren't to fill those positions. So I just wanted to let you guys know that's information that might help us make a decision. Um, knowing that, you know, they could potentially not fill a few positions and, um, and that would be about five hundred thousand dollars, but. They didn't want to cut anything out of their budget, so.
And what I would say is unless, um. What, what oftentimes we, we have to be careful of is speaking on behalf of the offices and departments of, when they're not here to give additional detail.
Uh, uh, speaking on behalf of the, but, oh, I, I'm just using data that was given to us by. By your office, so budget office and from, um, and this is data, so.
Assessor Drew, though, I remember him saying, here's what would happen under this scenario, and then he said. If you're asking me what I could absolutely, what could I cut? Without, you know, and still being able to get the, the core work done, and he had a, you know, a, a scaled back version of that.
And what I will say is that, in this information, cuz we're moving fast. We did not have time to send this out to all the offices and departments and, and to verify this, so I don't want. I just, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Well, and then according to, you know, the file that we, we looked at yesterday that was given us to by Summer, the notes in there say. Impossible to meet statutory guidelines. In quotations, our office would need to reduce its total salaries and benefits by over forty-one percent. So those are quotations of Stephen. Speaking, then this is coming from that, yesterday, there was a different, um, a thing that we never got to go over. That, um, Summer put together, that's what I'm reading from.
Yeah, I got, I got it, that's, yeah, I think it's very valid to, to go through those notes, if you.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's kind of what I wanna make sure we're covering.
Anyone else have thoughts on the assessor? I mean, I, I, I think that. I think that the assessor's office. Is a place to potentially reapply funding. Because, I, I, I mean, not saying how much, but because they've really, you know. There's been a very strong case made that they've never had restoration of cuts from the Great Recession. Population's increasing, legislative mandates of increasing, the, the. We're already seeing at the current staffing level that deadlines are slipping from previous years in terms of how. Their office is getting stuff done, so they're, they're struggling, um. And the property tax collection system is kind of foundational to, to function of county government, um. So it would be on my list for potential, uh, additional funding, just, that's where I'm at. Uh, and again, I don't know how much, but I think it's worth consideration of, of dropping their cut below the. Six, if, if we're, again, we're in the, we're in the, we're in the tan box for, for purposes of discussion, so. Sixteen point seven percent cut, I would think reducing that for the assessor would might make sense.
I would also like to consider the assessor as well, so I'm, um. I, I, I also don't know to what percent, but, um.
Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you, um, I am in agreement with what I'm hearing, um. I would like to avoid reducing them as much as we possibly can. I think maybe, maybe an approach for this, and I don't know how others feel, I'm open to, you know, this is just a thought. But looking at the blue column, where we have the twelve percent reduction at only seven hundred thirty-four thousand. That might be a good baseline, and then we can use whatever, you know, we have to discuss, um, discretionary. Wise, to maybe try to fill that gap even more for them, but I don't know how others feel.
What do you think of the twelve percent cut?
Chair, maybe, what I would sug- suggest is, maybe you go through, before we talk about numbers, cuz I like the idea about. You know, you need to know how much the money's gonna spread.
Yeah.
You go through and just get an overview from commissioners of where they, is there agreement? Board majority agreement on which offices and departments to add back. Then when we look at that, you can go over some of the notes and figure out and start making some moves that.
So as we move through the different columns here, or the different item, the line items here, let, let's just get commissioners' thoughts. I mean, say whatever you want, but before we move to the next one, let's, how do you express you'd like to see and, uh, that one considered? Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just, yeah, I, I think we're, I think we're getting there, but I, I, I wanna caution us against just going alphabetically. And because we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna distribute all the money before we, you know, consider all the different departments. Uh, so.
Talking about the numbers of money yet, we're just saying which one should be considered.
Okay, yeah, I just don't wanna do it arbitrarily, and I don't wanna do it by alphabetical order, and, you know. The, the last name on the list to get the short end of the stick.
No, no, that's not gonna happen. Commissioner Grant, are you, uh, where are you, where the, Commissioner Grant Fornier, would you like to consider the assessor for?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Fornier?
I don't wanna say no, but I don't know yet, because I would, you know, like.
Got it. So there was, there were four affirmatives on that one, so that'll be kind of on the list. Let's talk about the auditor's office.
Where the auditors, you know, I, I would like to consider, but also. Uh, the auditor talked about revenue possibilities, right, and, um, she did send in new information. Um, and so for me, I would like to see if the proposed. Bill that she put forward, can that mitigate some of the costs? Um, and, um, you know, she talked about, you know. Moving, charging, doing actual real cost to, uh, elections, so I kinda wanna see how. You know, with revenue would play out, uh, the two revenue sources that she mentioned.
Was the bill you're talking about part of the, what was on our list to look at for Fri- for Friday? County manager's nodding. Commissioner Grant?
Well, well, I mean, I guess I would just echo that, that, I guess, I guess the question I have is. So how we would approach that, right, is that they're saying that they have additional revenue, so then we would still cut their budget, but then their revenue would. Cover it, right? I mean, is that kind of what?
No, that they're not an enterprise fund, so they, that's not how the auditor's office works. They bring in different revenues, it goes into the general fund, and they get, they're covered by general fund.
Okay, good. I, I didn't, I, I wasn't sure how that went down, so, okay, alright.
And we have to be careful about thinking about it as a, well, we're just gonna go out and make the revenue and cover it, cuz it doesn't quite work that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and again, auditor is always a very effective advocate for this, and, and we have, we have absolutely relied on that. In budget amendments and difference over the past to cover different positions, but when all is said and done. The fact that some offices have tools to generate revenue and others don't, isn't really a fair. You know, so you get no budget cuts cuz you just, because of, of your functions, you have these tools and another office doesn't have those tools, so they get. A twenty-six percent cut, I mean, that kind of, that kind of thinking just can't be how.
They're not, yeah, they're not your tools, they're the county's tools.
Right, so I mean, I mean, and we, and again. We do factor that in, and we have factored that in, and, you know. But it can't go to the nth degree, like it's, it's owned by the auditor's office, that just can't be the way it works. Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you, uh, so I do hear what folks are saying, um, that makes sense to me, you know, it's not like you. Keep the revenue that you generate, but I do think it's an important factor to consider because, um. The more we cut departments and offices that actually generate revenue, the lower their capacity is to generate that revenue. So even if the goal in mind isn't, okay, everything the auditor's office generates goes back into their office. I'm still keeping in mind that anything they generate benefits the county as a whole, so that's what, one thing that. I'm weighing when we consider cutting offices that are bringing in revenue.
Understood.
Uh, like, we did, when, when treasurer came in, the treasurer didn't say. This, 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 uh, interest that we can sweep is generated by the treasurer's office, so only the treasurer's office can use it. That would be the equivalent, I think.
I think each department and office came in and, well, the offices, I guess, because departments were all coming through our assistant county managers, but. Each office came in and said different things, so.
Yeah, but these, what I, I guess what I'm saying, like, it's a, these are county, these are tools of the county. And we all, it's all one system, so, and, and I think this, it's probably been said enough, I, I.
Okay, um. So what is it, so we're gonna defer on the auditor until we, what is it?
Could we just maybe, maybe we do like a, like a thumbs up or something for you?
Do a show of thumbs, and if there's a majority.
And I'm, I'm tracking, I am tracking all this in a spreadsheet, so like the, you know, how many of us are doing these, but, um, okay. I, I, I will say this, that I am definitely interested in understanding more about the bill. Like Carolina, so I feel like we need more information, um, um, but I also will say for me. Um, I, it'll be a thumbs up for me because, um, to, to give some money back to this group, uh, mostly because it's a. I worry about the, the finance, I mean, the, uh, the department and, um. And then, and the loss of staff and all of the things that have been going on kind of in the auditor's office, that's our payroll. Uh, the amount of work that still needs to get done for the, whatever that TC Connect, like, there are some really crucial pieces of. Of, of, um, you know, business that have to have, we can't. Have vacancies and slow that business down because it's really dependent, you know, TC Connect being one of those things. And I guess you'll also get that thumbs up for me because I ran a finance department, so I'm very. Aware of what it can feel like when, um, you lose, you're down a person, um, and so that, that will be where I. Feel like we need to put some of the funding.
Bill that you're talking about, Commissioner, which one is that?
So it was one of the ones that, yeah, well, it was one of the ones that they were talking about. Uh, and I remember asking very specifically about it, um.
I, I'm just confused, what does motor vehicle tax have to do with the auditor?
Remember they came in and they presented that it was something new that was initiated, which means they're gonna be getting a portion of that, and so. To use for elections or something, or?
No, to use for licensing and recording, so basically it's, it's an additional, um. A cut that the counties are getting in terms of whenever people are doing licensing and recording. Um, and so. Um, it's the, the filing fee for recording fees, it goes into effect in twenty twenty-six. Estimated revenue for that is six hundred thousand.
Estimated revenue for that is six hundred thousand, and then twenty twenty seven is six hundred, and so, that's. Um.
Have we put that, but we haven't put that into?
We have not put that in yet, so that's kind of what I asked for it to be included.
Okay, well, that would be. Something to know, Commissioner Fornier?
And I just wanted a point of clarification, Commissioner Grant was calling the auditor's office the finance. Department, and those are not the same thing, the auditor's office provides financial oversight. But the budget office is our finance department, and that's within the commissioner's office. And they're one of the, uh, they're one of the groups that that came in and provided twenty six percent pay cuts. So if we wanna make sure that the finance department is fully funded, that's a totally different thing.
Okay, well, the auditor, yeah, I mean, I understand your point, the auditor did, they've got financial services department, they call it, and they. We're talking about how they're shorthanded there, so I think.
And and they, they, they are, like, when I I will say that. The budget department is budget and finance is finance, finance counts all the doll, all the things up. And budget figures out how we're gonna spend it, and so it's a very, very different, different thing.
So I I guess I'll just kind of, I don't know if this way of doing it right now is the best approach, because. We're gonna, I feel like we're to the board, as a board, we're just gonna say yes to everything, right, of course, we don't wanna make the cuts, so we're, I I don't know, going through it. We're gonna come up with arguments for every office and department of like, so I. As as we're just getting down to two of them, right, like, we're. I I don't know how much benefit we're gonna get from this right now, I.
What do you think about about a different approach, going back to what I said about each commissioner saying, here's my top three priorities, or?
I think.
For reapplication?
Yeah, because I I mean, we're. You know, just hearing, we all can have arguments for every office and department here for them not to have cuts, and I don't know. Yeah, and and so, as we're going through all of them, I I just, that's just my concern, um, that. We're not gonna be able to.
And if there's one that doesn't, it feels really horrible to.
We're not gonna get to one, and everybody says no, they get nothing, we're gonna give everybody. You know, like, this, I don't think this is gonna work, we're, or or we just go, okay, everybody gets an even amount, that doesn't work either, you know?
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, um, well, I mean, I guess for me, this is a really helpful exercise in a different way, and I know it's gonna take time, I know that we need another meeting. I mean, the, but this, going down through this in kind of a methodical way, gives me the opportunity to hear from the other commissioners. What they think about each of these offices, which I have not had the chance to hear, right? And so, I, um, you know, for me, even though, I mean, even if if it was like, and it also would be like thumbs up. You know, if it's three to two and two, or two to three, or one to four, you know, I mean, it also gives us a way to kind of prioritize. Um, which ones we're gonna talk about first, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and I really value. Having time with all five of you to hear each of your thoughts on things, um, and and we have not. Had that time or spent the time, and I think that is our fiscal responsibility, since this is our number one job, and that's kind of where I. Wanna make sure that we are looking at each, each and every bucket, um, and then, and and that's kind of where I'm at.
So, I tend to think you're right, I I see what you're saying, I think it's, we should probably not even try, we should probably just go through and have a discussion. About, we think, the pros and cons of what we heard, and then double back with like a set of priorities. You know, voting or something, something more streamlined and concise. We have a hard stop at noon, there's a commissioners check in at one thirty, where we can continue, I'm looking to the county manager. So we can continue this from one thirty till, when, rest of the day? Is anybody available from one thirty on? No?
I'm going to the Mariners game, so.
What, what is the, um, what is your availability this afternoon?
Probably till three thirty, I am coming into the office, I'm, I made a bunch of zucchini bread, and you're all are gonna have to eat it, so, um, I'll be in the office for the one thirty meeting. But I I have a hard stop at three thirty.
So I have one thirty to three thirty, and then we'll be picking up maybe Thursday, maybe Friday.
Friday, yeah, to give our staff time to put stuff together.
But I mean, if these, these conversations, I mean, I. I'll cancel everything tomorrow, I mean, if we need to have, if we need to go have longer discussions on each group.
Me too.
While while the budget team is working on the new stuff for Friday, and we need to do that Thursday, that's, I think, something that can be done. Um, so let's just see where we get, um, maybe let's talk about one more office, and then we'll. We'll break and come back at one thirty and see how much we can get done this afternoon, so, um. Clerk's office, I'm gonna skip commissioner for now, we are all intimately aware of what what, we all know what the commissioner's office has and does, and. We don't need to talk about that right now, clerk's office? Any thoughts? Anyone who share, no, how about, uh?
I would just say it's tough to, when you've got, you know, for me, there's been perpetually vacant positions in there. And and I, you know, I think that taking those, uh, perpetually vacant positions into consideration. Is something we need to do, I just say that and leave it there.
Uh, yeah, that, I'm sorry, I had to get to my, I I have to be able to look at my notes, I have notes for each one, um, but I would agree with Commissioner Fornier, that, um. That within this group, um, I think there's been consistent vacancies, and we need to be at least looking at that vacancy savings in. Um, you know, we can talk about how, I have that list of how much that is, but, um, you know, uh, four positions at least, um. Have just been sitting there, uh, and so I think that, you know, cutting, uh, this one is, is a, a good thing, I guess.
Anyone else on the clerk? Uh, Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say I agree with looking at vacancy savings, and then another consideration, not just for the clerk, but for everyone who touches the public safety and justice system. Um, one thing I've been really considering for all of those is how each one impacts the other, so, as we get towards the end of this, um. You know, like, if we are cutting. The courts, that's gonna impact the clerk's office, so considerations like that, um, are things that I'm keeping in mind as well. Cause when we lower capacity in one area, we might have room to lower capacity in the other area, and vice versa, if we're not lowering one, we should consider how the workload will. Change or remain static in another area.
Yeah, that's a good point, coroner's office, uh, on this one, if I, let's remind ourselves, there was the forensic position.
Pathologist.
Like two ninety or something, and what, um, that was gonna cover or not cover. How how close did that get him to what he was asked to do? Look at the budget number here.
Remember, they're also working through a contract right now with HR, um, and so, I will. So one of my concerns with the coroner's office is that, historically, what we've seen in the past is. When, uh, we contract out for paren- for a pathologist, um, that. If we don't have like a a set contract with rates, and so whenever those rates have gone up. The coroner has had to come in front of the board and request, um. You know, additional funding to be able to complete those autopsies, and so, I, you know, for me, it would be. Important to get the, an actual contract with fees set, uh, before the year ends for a forensic pathologist. Um, and, you know, I think he offered up the the two ninety, um. An additional, because I think we currently have around seven hundred thousand or two eight hundred thousand, and so. For that contracted position, it would be like four hundred, and then he would give up the rest of that, so. It would be the.
So his original target was a reduction of about six fifty.
Yeah.
Going to the si- to the sixteen point seven, that drops to about four. Twenty.
Yeah. I would say just decide if you want to issue some money back, and then we can talk to them specifically. Again, I, we will get ourselves in trouble if we try to talk on behalf of the offices or departments, because there's, there's unique things, and. Just gotta make sure all the details add up, that's something that I've heard a lot about, um, from departments and offices, is. And we can even bring some folks back to the table by Friday, if you wanted to talk with them specifically, about, let's talk about what these impacts mean.
Add back list, and then those would be the targets to go have conversations with.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not really doing that, though, in this particular exercise, Commissioner Fornier?
Ju- I just wanna say that the coroner's office is, is, and we all know this, is an office that. Already runs on an absolute skeleton crew, no puns intended, it is like, they are. They are already lean, they are already bare bones, and so, uh, like, taking anything away from there is gonna, they're gonna feel it a lot.
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, um, well, just looking at this, so it looks like if we were gonna, if we end up with the twelve percent. You know, the the blue set of boxes, um, you know, that, the amount that we're proposing, that that, uh, that the. The coroner cuts is almost exactly the amount that he, um, submitted, and, you know, when they came before us, which was like two nine. It's two ninety, five sixty two, so, so I just, um, just letting you guys know that, uh, I think I would agree, though, that with Wayne, that I'm not. That they're already a really tight crew, and, um, I feel like they, you know, they offered up a position in that, and that was, um. You know, gonna be enough.
You know, last couple of minutes, let's talk about Superior and Juvenile Court, which I think are together, right? That's a hard one, I think it's a really hard one, it's a bi- it's a fairly big department, they did not. They they did not offer any cut.
So with juvenile court going to the vacancies, right, they've had eight vacancies, and they've been vacant for three hundred and ninety one days. Um. And so, I, you know. I I would like to know like more on on that, right, because that's, again, a high level of. Of positions that are vacant for a.
Just in the jail?
Those are the juvenile jail kids.
Yeah, and so, that's, you know, if it's an area where, you know, I know that part of it has been, um, because. Our our juvenile jail has been empty, right, um, but with those positions, like. The number of days of vacancies is what I'm looking at as well, and and seeing that there is eight positions.
How much is that worth?
Uh, it says that it is worth, um, eight hundred and eighty one thousand five hundred and forty.
Uh, I have some opinions. Go ahead, Commissioner Fornier.
This one is kind of hard for me, because, you know, we've got, we've got the juvenile jail, is, it is large, it is very nice for our region. And and it's an important, like, public s- safety service, and, like, it it. Uh, you know, I've tried bringing it up before, I know that Grace Harbor County's juvenile jail is failing. Mason County's juvenile justice facility is failing, and I I think that we have kind of a responsibility. To provide the service to some of the neighboring jurisdictions, and they would be paying to use our facility that is sitting vacant. And, and and, you know, juvenile courts knows that we've, we've asked to have these conversations. And they could have come to us and said, hey, you know, we have additional revenue options where, you know, we would retain our staff, and we would sign. You know, consider contracts with our neighboring counties, and that didn't happen. And and like, I that, that doesn't sit right with me, we've got facilities that are sitting vacant that are better than all of our neighbors.
Well, I was just gonna say that the the vacancy information, um, is, it it's a. Average number of days, and the information was last updated at the end of July, so it may need, um, a second look, just to see.
Fair enough.
But, um, at that point, yeah, we had considered everything that was filled.
Yeah, and so I think just. That information being included on this chart without it being reviewed by the offices and departments wouldn't have been. And that's not the ideal, so, um. The the things are just moving really fast, what I'm saying is, so, we we just, I don't want. Because folks are gonna be watching this meeting, I just wanna make sure that the commissioners were caveating what information we gave you, um, and it's. And and you understand that, um, it's back from July, and so things, things will most likely change since then. Being in, now that's September.
Okay, it's noon, I understand that some folks have obligations, so, we're gonna, we're gonna recess. We're gonna pick this conversation up at one thirty, and the commissioners check in. Thank you.